Good afternoon, everyone. I hereby call to order this regular board meeting of Orange Unified School District for June 13th, 2024 at 5:04 PM. Trustee Rumsey, do we have a quorum?
Yes.
Thank you. And do we have any public comments? So, we do not have any public comments for closed session, but I have been told that there are public comments for non-agenda, specifically from our student population who is here. So, if the board is willing to hear them, it's about an employee who originally wrote down the comment as 2A, but it's classified as 17. Would the board be willing to hear them now before we go into closed session? Okay, so we do have agreement from the board, so we'll call up our public comments, please. Anel de Toro.
I counted nineteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. This might be in reverse order. I see you guys have numbers. Do those numbers...
That's just for the...
Okay, sorry. Okay, so then, is there an Anel del Toro? Okay, you're first.
It's one minute each, based on the number of cards I read.
I will read the statement quickly. "Person wishing to speak should submit a public comment card prior to the meeting. In general, individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to thirty minutes. A speaker shall not yield to another person. The total time for agenda items and non-agenda items at regular meetings shall be thirty minutes." We have, you said seventeen? So, that would put us in the C category of sixteen to thirty or more speakers. Will each be allowed one minute to speak. And then, we have Deborah Nagm, Monique del Toro, Whitney Cohen, and Desiree Gamboa. So, you will be on deck. All right, you may go.
Wonderful. Thank you, the Board of Trustees, for allowing us the opportunity to speak. Hello, my name is Anel del Toro, an EMHS alumni and a parent. As parents of a cheerleader on varsity, we have had the privilege of seeing our coach, Amanda, being a wonderful coach to our daughter, and witnessing firsthand the incredible impact she has had on our athletes and the program. Amanda is not only a skilled and dedicated coach, but she also possesses a genuinely positive attitude that radiates throughout our entire program. Her unwavering belief in the abilities of the athletes and her constant motivation have pushed our cheerleaders to reach new heights and exceed our expectations. After such a successful season, you see our deep concern and disappointment regarding ElMedina Administration's recent decision to terminate Ms. Amanda Bonilla's employment as cheer coach at Elmo. The decision to terminate Amanda's contract left many of us feeling disheartened and disillusioned. It seemed unjust to dismiss someone who has dedicated so much time and effort to the betterment of the cheer program. Our athletes do not need a different direction. What they are currently in has and will be the best yet. We urge you to reconsider this decision and reinstate Amanda...
Thank you. Deborah Nagm, and we need to clarify that whether or not they're students, so...
So, would you like to have the students speak first? Because I believe you have all the adult cards there.
Okay.
I believe the gentleman organized them by student and then parents.
Oh, I see. The check mark, okay. So, I'll set you aside.
Because they were ready to speak.
Yeah, we'll do the students first. So, Monique del Toro is a student. Before you start, are we going to listen to all of these cards, or are we going to just listen to the students? And I ask that because it might change their time.
That's a discussion for the board. I was considering all of them because they're all on the same topic.
Okay. And then, we just listen to all of them right now?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good to me. Okay, you're good.
Honorable Superintendent and esteemed faculty and fellow students, my name is Monique del Toro, and I stand before you today as a student athlete with immense pride and admiration to speak about someone whose presence has illuminated our high school cheer program with love, dedication, and peril leadership. Coach Amanda, Coach Amanda embodies the very essence of a leader. Her loving character radiates warm inclusivity, making every member of our team feel valued and supported under her guidance. We have become a cohesive unit, but also a family bound by mutual respect and admiration. Day in and day out, she invests countless hours into refining our skills, fostering teamwork, and instilling in us the importance of perseverance, motivating each of us to push beyond our limits and strive for excellence both on and off the mat. Perhaps the most notably notable, Coach Amanda's leadership has propelled our team to three consecutive titles in just one year, a feat that should speak volumes about her exceptional coaching abilities. I urge you to reconsider and reinstate Coach Amanda for the extraordinary leader and mentor that she is. Her unwavering love, dedication, and leadership only elevated our school cheerleading program, but have also left a mark on each and every one of us today. That's why we're all here before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney Cohen. And then, Desiree Gamboa.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. My name is Whitney Cohen. I am an incoming sophomore at ElMedina, and this will be my second season with the cheer program. I transferred to ElMedina my second week of school. While this may not seem late to join the cheer program, the team had already learned new material and was practicing new skills. I explained my situation to Coach Amanda and requested a private tryout. Because it was already late in the season, I didn't have much hope, but Coach Amanda gave me a beautiful opportunity to cheer for her team. When others might have overlooked me, she saw potential and took a chance on me. Her belief in my abilities gave me the confidence to push myself harder and achieve more than I myself ever thought possible. Her support and guidance have been invaluable to my outlook on life, and I am forever grateful for the chance she gave me to grow and succeed. I am here today hoping that the board will reinstate Coach Amanda's contract and acknowledge the impact Coach Amanda has made on not only mine, but every one of the young ladies' lives in our cheer program. Thank you.
Desiree Gamboa. And then, Kiara Penrile. And then, Kalina Lenz.
Good evening. My name is Desiree Gamboa. I am a varsity cheerleader, and I have been on the team for one year, but one year can make a difference. From the moment I made the team, I wanted to quit. I was shy, and I didn't know what I was capable of doing, until I met Coach Amanda. Coach Amanda has really shown me what being a team player is like, and I feel way more confident with myself, and I know what my capability is actually worth. With Coach Amanda always being around, I have always looked up to her. She's inspired me to become a coach for an elementary school cheer team. Not only that, but ever since I became a part of the program, my views and academic goals have changed for the better. Throughout middle school, I was a struggling student. After I became a part of the cheer family, she has driven me to success. I have been cheerleader for many years, and never have I had a coach at this level as understanding and respectful for the high emotions. I can't imagine this program without her. Please consider keeping Coach Amanda as a part of the ElMedina Cheer Program. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kiara.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent. My name is Kiara Penrile, and I'm a recently graduated high school student and an outgoing captain for the ElMedina Cheer Team. As a varsity member for four years, having been through a cycle of five cheer coaches alone just in under two years, I have seen firsthand the impact Coach Amanda has had on the program. As I reflect back on my cheer experience, I can think nothing but positive memories and experiences that have occurred under Coach Amanda. Under her coaching, we have earned several championship titles, and she has personally supported me towards earning scholarships and other opportunities that would excel both my athletics and my academics. Coach Amanda was not just our coach, but a role model and a mentor who taught us how to be the bigger person, to always show kindness even if it was not reciprocated, and served as our support system in hardships, some of which were not even cheer-related, whether it was personal issues or even school situations. Moving up in my educational journey, I left my high school cheer experience excited to all the new incoming athletes, knowing that they would thrive under Coach Amanda's work ethic as they transform into young adults just as I had before them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kalina Lenz, and after that will be Ashley Sanchez.
Good evening. My name is Kalina Lenz, and I am an alumni of ElMedina High School, class of twenty-three. I was a part of the ElMedina Cheer Program all four years of high school and was captain my senior year. Throughout my four years, we had fourteen coaches and advisors for both cheer and pom. We had been through so much, which became draining for us as a team, and we had lost hope in finding someone that would truly stay and support us. This was until Coach Amanda came along. She came and gave us hope that someone would be able to stay and help our program grow. She also helped me grow personally as an athlete and was always there supporting me on her own time. She would stay after team tumbling practice and support me in stunt classes, and also stayed after Nationals and watched me try out for USA Cheer staff. I ended up getting the job, and I couldn't have done it without her support and guidance. She has pushed me to become the best version of myself, whether it was through me as an athlete or through my role as a captain. She would constantly check in on us and make sure we were all doing well, which is so refreshing to see in a coach, that they care about more than just what we put on the mat. There aren't enough words to express how much Coach Amanda has done for me. She has shown and taught me so much, and I will forever keep her words with me in mind as I continue my cheer career in college. I am so glad I was able to be coached by her, and I hope many more athletes at ElMedina will be able to experience all the knowledge she has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ashley Sanchez, followed by Abigail Hunzucker.
Hi, my name is Ashley. I want to thank the members of the board for letting me speak today. I would like to say the reason why I came to this school was because of such an amazing cheer program this school had to offer. I've been cheer at my middle school for two years, and through that, I met our amazing Coach Amanda. She was so great, and I learned so much from her in a little, in a small amount of time. It was then that I decided I was going to Elmo. Without this, without Coach Amanda, this team won't be as good as it was in the past year because she is so passionate and understanding. She is what made many girls, including me, come to Elmo. I am here asking to please reinstate Coach Amanda so she could keep continuing to coach the ElMedina Cheer Team. Thank you.
Abigail Hunzucker, or Hunzauer, followed by Daisy Lugo.
Good afternoon. My name is Abby Hunzucker, and this is my second year in the ElMedina Cheer Program. I am here today to talk on behalf of my coach, Coach Amanda. Coach Amanda is not only a coach, but a mother to me and my teammates. Both Amanda and Ally have given all of us a safe space to go to. I don't know how I would have gotten through my first year of high school without them. With this being said, I do not want that to change. I do not want this to be a toxic environment, especially with Ms. Kelly. I have heard and seen how toxic of an environment Ms. Kelly causes, and I nor my teammates want to be a part of that. I am nervous about this new direction for the cheer program with Ms. Kelly. My current and future teammates deserve to continue to have positive leadership, and that is Coach Amanda. With all this being said, I hope you consider my words and the words of my fellow athletes about the coach that got us the USA Regional, State, and National Championship titles. Thank you for your time.
Daisy Lugo, followed by Amelia Randolph.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Daisy Lugo. I'll soon be a sophomore at Elmo. First of all, I would like to say Coach Amanda is such an amazing coach. I tried out for cheer because I had heard so many good things about her. During trials, I was nervous and scared I wasn't going to make it, but thanks to Coach Amanda, she inspired me to keep going and try my best. She has created such a strong team and amazing team. Thank you for giving me this opportunity for me to speak today. Have a good day.
Amelia Randolph. Lauren Radske.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amelia Randolph, and I am a proud member of the ElMedina Cheer Team. The cheer program itself has brought me many great opportunities, but our coach is truly the reason we are a team. When I tried out for the cheer team at ElMedina, I was immediately welcomed and felt loved by many. Coach Amanda made it a priority to not only help us grow in our technique as cheerleaders, but she has taught us how to have confidence, work with others, manage our time well, and many other life skills that I use every day. Our coaches have made us a family. They have always made themselves available to us when we need to talk, even if it's not about cheer. They have created an incredible bond with us that cannot be broken. With that being said, the letting go of Coach Amanda is incredibly frustrating and confusing. She has poured her heart and soul into our team and devoted countless hours to us. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate your time and listening for all we have to say. I'm praying that the situation can be reversed so we can continue on for another successful season. Thank you.
Lauren Radske, followed by Maya Perata.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Lauren Radske, and I am a proud member of the ElMedina Cheerleading Team. I have been on the cheer team for two years now, and I am here to speak on behalf of my fellow athletes and to express our deep concern over the recent dismissal of our beloved Coach Amanda. Coach Amanda has been more than just a coach to us. She has been a mentor, a role model, and a source of unwavering support. Under her guidance, our team has not only improved in skill and technique, but has also grown in unity, confidence, and resilience. Many of us joined this program because of the reputation that Coach Amanda has built. She has created a community where we feel safe, supported, and motivated to excel. Her dismissal feels unjust and has left a void that cannot easily be filled. Removing Coach Amanda harms the progress and spirit of our team. We need a coach who inspires us, who we can trust. We need a coach who inspires us, who we can trust, and who genuinely cares about our development and well-being, which are qualities that Coach Amanda portrayed each and every day. I urge you to reconsider this decision and to recognize the positive influence that Coach Amanda has had on our lives and on this program. Removing her not only affects us as individuals, but also jeopardizes the future success and spirit of our team. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Maya Pirata, followed by Deborah Najum.
Good afternoon. My name is Maya Pirata. I've been a part of the El Madina Cheerleading since last year and have been fortunate enough to be coached by Coach Amanda. I went into my freshman year with no prior cheerleading experience and overall feeling extremely nervous. However, after my first meeting with Coach Amanda, I knew that I've joined a welcoming and caring community. The passion that Coach Amanda has for coaching is something that you don't see often. She's pushed me to become the best version of myself even outside of cheerleading. The strong bond that she has built with the team creates a safe and healthy environment where everyone can express their feelings freely. Coach Amanda hasn't just coached us. She's turned our team into a family and taught us numerous life lessons. Coach has given us more than just titles and recognitions. She's built us to become independent and resilient, resilient young ladies. Our team this upcoming season would be incomplete without Coach Amanda, which is why I'm here hoping that the board recognizes our efforts and realizes how important it is to reinstate her contract and reunite this family. Thank you.
Deborah Najum, followed by Mia Ree.
Good evening, board, and thank you for having us, and thank you for your consideration in moving our comments to the front of your meeting. We really appreciate that. I'm here as like two years outside of El Madina. I was three years the president of the Booster Club at El Madina. During that time, I'm, I was actually in the position that these incoming freshmen are, where the admin assigned an advisor that is inexperienced and unable to lead. Here, again, in behalf of these kids, the importance of a skilled cheer coach like Amanda is paramount to the success of the athletes and experience as participants. Amanda should be reinstated. We took, it took us four years as a booster club to identify a coach that would be good for these kids and lead them and take them in the direction that she has. And for it to be unraveled by an actor that is inexperienced is unfortunate. With, in addition, what my daughter dealt with when admin did this before was a coach that was drunk at camp, a coach that showed up and didn't know what he, what he was doing. So, and I've outlined everything in an email to you all, so it details, and I'm happy to expand.
Thank you. Mia Ree and Annette Castanon. Mia Ree. Okay. Annette Castanon.
Good afternoon, members of OUSD Leadership and our esteemed Board of Trustees. Thank you for this opportunity to address you today. I'm Annette Castanon, a proud parent of two children in the El Madina Athletic Programs. My son, a football player, just graduated last week, and my daughter is a current varsity cheerleader. I firmly believe in the adage, "It takes a village to raise a child," and I live by that every day. Coach Amanda embodies dedication to her athletes and the cheer and pom program. She postponed a trip to Italy when she was the maid of honor at her best friend's wedding just so the girls would not miss a home game this season. She invested countless hours choreographing and teaching the parents a cheer routine, kick lines, stunts, and all, just to see the joy in her athletes' faces at the competition send-off event. Coach Amanda ensures all sports teams on campus feel valued by attending their senior recognition events, even during our own competition season. Coach Amanda is earned the love and respect of our athletes, parents, and the community. What more could one ask from a coach? I respectfully ask, to urge you to support and our student athletes and the El Madina Cheer Community. Thank you.
Thank you. Irma Guzman, and then Emily Hatton, or Hatton? A translation.
So, the speaker gets one minute in Spanish, and then in addition to that, we'll have the translation.
Ella llegó con muchas inseguridades y gracias a Coach Amanda por las palabras que le dio. Ella lo hizo y está en este, en este equipo. Siento que no está bien que la hayan despedido, que esté pasando esto después de que la persona ya no va a estar como parte de, del Medina y haya tomado esta decisión. Nos haga dejado sin una coach. He escuchado muchas cosas sobre ella siendo que ha sido llevado al Medina como en campeonatos. Y deberíamos de tener una coach como ella para que siga llevando a nuestros estudiantes a los dueños que ellos tienen. Gracias.
Good evening. I'm here to thank Coach Amanda for how she helped my, my daughter. I have a daughter that is new to El Madina School. It's her first year, and she was having difficulties, but the coach helped her to feel included, and my daughter accomplished a lot with Coach Amanda. So I feel that it's unjust and unfair that she's being let go after all the work she's done for the community and these kids at El Medina. And she was let go by a person that is not even going to be at El Medina anymore. We need really Coach Amanda back and more people like Coach Amanda in the school.
Thank you. Thank you. Emily Hatton, and then Alexis Murphy.
Good afternoon, men and women of the board. My name is Emily Hatton. I'm here as a concerned parent of the El Madina Cheer Program. I'm asking the board's reinstatement of Coach Amanda's contract. Coach Amanda is a key element to the success of this program, from such accomplishments as becoming USA Regional, State, and National Champions to mayoral recognition just last month. Coach Amanda has instilled the very values in our athletes that you would want from a coach. She doesn't just coach this team. She has created a safe space for these girls to have during the most impressionable times of their lives. Our family personally chose El Madina due to the cheer program and coaching staff. Amanda doesn't just leave this job at school and collect a paycheck. You can tell that she genuinely loves the athletes and this sport. I would hate to see this program fall apart to what I believe to be a rash, unfair decision by an administration that chose feelings over facts. The campus will not be the same without her love, support, and willingness to teach our athletes what it truly means to be a vanguard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alexis Murphy, and then Christine Haxton. Or Maxton, sorry.
Hi, my name's Alexis Murphy, and I'm an alumni of the El Madina Cheer Team from 2023. And I think my mom was one of the parents who actually hired Coach Amanda, and for the decision of letting go of her has actually made me very frustrated, and it's outrageous that that decision has been made. Coach Amanda has, Coach Amanda has made me feel that she's the second family to me. She'd put in extra time after our practices. After that, she'd stay for even an hour if she needed to because she loves us so much. She's put so much support and love into our team, and she's made our team national champions. And when I was in the cheer program, I also went through fourteen different coaches, and just going through that made me fall out of having the love of the cheer team. And then when Coach Amanda came around, she made me love that sport even more.
Thank you. Christine Haxton, and then Adriana Correa.
Thank you for providing the opportunity to speak in support of Amanda Benia. My name is Christine Haxton. My daughter was a freshman JV cheerleader this year. Amanda is an extraordinary leader who provided encouragement and a place of belonging for the entire cheer team. With her leadership, the girls brought home championship titles. Amanda has been instrumental in creating confidence and providing a place of belonging and a unified family for our athletes. During competitions, Amanda encouraged our athletes to support other schools competing that didn't have support. Our girls sat on the mats and cheered on their competitors. That sportsmanship was ingrained into our athletes. That's the type of coach that we want influencing and leading our girls. The cheer program is a big commitment for the athletes, the coaches, and the parents. We sacrifice our time and money because we believe in this program. We believe in Coach Amanda and the positive impact she has on our girls. Please consider the reinstatement of Coach Amanda and allow our athletes to continue to be part of a program that they love. Thank you.
Thank you. Adriana Correa.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the board. I am here regarding El Madina's administrative staff's decision in not renewing the cheer coach's contract. As a stakeholder, it is extremely disappointing and so difficult to explain this unfair decision to my daughter. Had the coach has been negative and dismissive, it would have been an easier decision to understand. However, this is not the case. Coach Amanda and Coach Ally have demonstrated the capability to go beyond expectations and have poured their heart and soul into the El Madina Cheer Team. They have won regional and national cheer titles. More importantly, the coaches have fostered a positive cheer program at Elmo. When prospective parents ask me about my experience with El Madina High School, I give the school a top rating and encourage the other families to also attend El Madina. With the abrupt decision not to renew the coach's contract, it leaves me feeling a bit disillusioned with the administrative staff that did not reach out to cheer parents for their input on such an important decision. Furthermore, the administrative staff did not inform us of the decision. It was Coach Amanda. As of today, I am still unclear as to why the coach's contract will not be renewed. It goes against OUSD's strategic focus area. Strong and effective communication builds trust and promotes positive.
Thank you.
President Page, I just wanted to make sure that the audience is aware that the board does not comment on non-agenda comments from the public. So I just wanted you to be aware of that so you don't think they're doing it on purpose.
Thank you. That was the final speaker.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming in and, and speaking. It's truly inspirational to see our students take leadership roles and, and coming in to speak.
Good evening, everyone. I hereby call to order the regular board meeting at Orange Unified on June 13th at 7:26. Can we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? We have report of closed session decisions. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, Board President. The Board of Education is pleased to announce the following appointment. Sulema Holgyng to the position of Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. The vote was seven zero. Congratulations.
Great, thank you so much.
And that concludes the closed session reports.
Thank you. We move on to the adoption of the agenda. May I please have a motion to adopt? Thank you, Trustee Pelley. Is there a second? Thank you, Trustee Yamazaki. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is adopted, seven oh. And now we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. As you know, the 2023-24 school year has come to a close. And last week, we celebrated with the joyous occasions of promotions and graduations, which are always among the highlights of our school year. It was my distinct honor to attend all five of our graduation ceremonies at Fred Kelly, where we celebrated one of the most significant educational milestones for our students. I want to express my gratitude to the board for attending the graduations. We achieved one of the highest rates of board member participation in recent memory. The graduating class began with the high school journey being remote due to the pandemic, and hearing about all they accomplished is truly inspirational. Our graduates have shown incredible resilience and adaptability transitioning to online learning, coping with uncertainties and still managing to succeed is a testament to their strength and determination. Each of our graduation ceremonies was a celebration of much more than just academic success. The heartfelt speeches delivered by our student speakers not only highlighted their academic journeys but also reflected the shared experiences, challenges, and triumphs of their entire graduating class. It was heartwarming to see the overwhelming presence of families and friends who came to celebrate our graduates. Their joyful expression on their faces of our graduates highlighted the culmination of hard work and dedication. And so, we're excited to see the incredible things that are in front of them. And I'd like to take a moment just to recognize our teachers and staff whose dedication has been instrumental in guiding our students through their educational journey. Your hard work and commitment have made a lasting impact on our graduates. I also want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the Fred Kelly Stadium staff, our Maintenance and Operations Department, Student and Community Services, and everyone who worked long hours to ensure that our graduates and their loved ones had a safe and memorable experience. Your efforts were greatly appreciated and they did not go unnoticed. So, thank you. And I obviously wasn't, you know, kind of going fast enough with the script because we, you know, but I think you saw many of the pictures and videos of that. And I want to make sure that in case you missed the ceremonies and you'd like to relive the happy occasions, you can go to the OUSD homepage and it features links to all five of the video streams and galleries of the photos for Richland, Parkside, Edge Academy, Orange High, Almedina Canyon, and Vella Park. Congratulations once again to the class of 2024. And speaking of moving on to new adventures, we wanted to take a moment to recognize our good friend here to my left and colleague, Mr. Dave Rivera, who's retiring at the end of the month. And the board wanted to put something together to thank him for his time here at Orange Unified. So, I think we have a video that we're going to play.
I'm glad that I was here at the right time to make a difference, that people agreed, and we worked collaboratively to find the solution. It wasn't just all my ideas. And surrounding myself with really very smart people who have the passion for the work and had the commitment that we've been able to accomplish what we accomplished. So, my legacy is that being part of a great team. One of my favorite things to do is to visit schools and walk into the kindergarten class and having these little kids run up to me, hugging my knees, and just being happy. Because if we do our work right, kids are going to be happy and smiling. They're going to be in a classroom that isn't 100 degrees, that there's no leaks in the roof. But what I hope that our kids can appreciate is that when as they're growing, what they have available for them in terms of the amount of teachers, the amount of services, the condition of the facilities, that they have a warm and nutritious meals, that they have a safe bus to ride in, that they get the services that they need when they need. And by building the system that we've built, we have the resources to make that happen. I know Orange is going to flourish because we have great people here who care and love for this district. This is my home. This is where I want to end my career. And this is the perfect way to end.
And although that concludes my superintendent's report, I think we're going to roll right into the president's report and continue to talk about Dave a little bit more, right?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you for that. You know, during the retirement celebration, I did call out to Mr. Rivera and gave him one last chance to take back his retirement because we're going to miss you so much. I have some words to share, but after I share a little bit about Mr. Rivera's story within our district, I do welcome additional comments from my fellow board members. So, after dedicating nearly 36 years of service to the Orange Unified School District, you know, our deputy superintendent and CBO has announced his retirement. He has 10 days left, right? But who's counting? Mr. Rivera commenced his tenure as Assistant Superintendent for Business Services on May 14th, 2018. He has subsequently been promoted to Deputy Superintendent in July 2022 and tasked with ensuring the proper support and implementation of our strategic plan of efficient utilization of fiscal capital. And most recently, Mr. Rivera was awarded 2024 Administrator of the Year for his vision, integrity, leadership, and dedication to providing top-notch facilities for OUSD students. Throughout his service at OUSD, Mr. Rivera has exhibited exemplary leadership, commitment, and dedication to fostering academic excellence and student success. Under his guidance, the district has achieved significant milestones and navigated challenges, always prioritizing the best interests of students, staff, and our community. Mr. Rivera's accomplishments include overseeing Measure S Phase 1 construction and delivered over 200,000 square feet of new teaching and learning space in state-of-the-art science centers across several high school campuses. Additionally, during Phase 2 of construction, he has focused on further campus enhancements and tailored each to each of our comprehensive high schools' needs. Beyond Measure S projects, Mr. Rivera has effectively utilized federal funds to repair, maintain, and update school facilities, including HVAC unit replacements and additions, our gym renovations, shade shelter constructions, and playground upgrades. In addition to that, he has also contributed to extend our fiscal responsibility and community engagement as it has saved taxpayers $25 million on Measure S bonds charges. In addition to that, he has restructured OPEB bonds for long-term savings and ensured sound financial management within OUSD. He has completely transformed that department. And you have all of our gratitude. In addition to that, there's so many additional initiatives like our attacked and retained programs, just having the best credit score out of all the school districts. It's just like he continues to amaze us. And the only words that come to mind to define you is a true champion for public education. And we owe you so much more. Thank you. Would any of my colleagues like to share any additional words?
I'll say something.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, Trustee Page said most of his accomplishments here in OUSD. I just want to thank Dave for his service, his leadership, and I think he's probably one of the most impeccably dressed administrator with his scars. We would make comments on his scars. And he'd really dress for the occasion in his neatly folded pocket squares, right? He showed me a little secret. One time he pulled it out and it was like pre-folded. But I think it's really reflective. That detail is reflective of who he is, attention to detail. And I see it in his budget presentations, his fiscal analysis, his cost savings. So, I really do appreciate you. We will miss you so much. And I wish you all the best in your next chapter in life and retirement and hanging out in Cabo or something. Thank you, Dave.
Go ahead.
I'll go. I just want to thank you as well. Obviously, I think it's always been demonstrated that your north star is the kids and taking care of facilities, programs, anything we can do to put kids first. And that's obvious in everything you do. You are a champion of public education. One of the legacies you leave behind is the foundation. I know that that was something that was a passion of yours. And I think that that is just another example of how you put something together that was 100% student-driven. And so many students are going to benefit from that. I mean, I think you've been a true visionary. And I think that sometimes the business, chief business officer isn't always the most visionary in the district. And I think you like take the cake. You are probably one of our most visionary administrators, and I appreciate that. And I've learned so much from you. You're brilliant. You've led us to new heights to, you've been our sounding board, you've been our educator, listened to us asking questions that are probably dumb, but you're very patient and you always listen and you always explain things in a way that's important. You've served as a sleeping aid occasionally, listening to financial reports that I'm like, uh. But no, you've been amazing. And I just really appreciate everything that you've done and appreciate you as a human being. And I love that you probably cry more than I do. And that's, that's a good thing. I know. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Glass.
In the short time that I've worked with you, I just want to say as an observational tool, I want to say that you inspire so much trust. The way that you speak to people, the way that you speak to us and share information that is very important to the sound running of any kind of organization. But in this particular case, for a multimillion-dollar organization, you make sure that you are clear and concise and patient. And I really appreciate that because that's really what fathers do, right? And husbands do. And I appreciate that carryover, that transferability that you bring to your professional life. So, I appreciate that. And good luck.
Okay. I also cry a lot, so I'm glad that you cry as well. So, I've only had the opportunity to work with you in this capacity for five weeks. And I'm already just astounded at what I didn't even know that you did and how, kind of what everyone has said, but just how visionary you are and how calm you always are. Because if I were in charge of the money in a district this size, I would not be a calm person. And you are always helping us to feel calm. So, I really appreciate that. I was fortunate enough to have been working with you for the past five or six years as a principal, so kind of in a different capacity. And I just wanted to thank you because you, I remember my first meeting with you, and I was scared to death because you were the big guy. And I needed portables for Fletcher as we were growing. And you were just, you knew everything about it. You knew what the importance was. You listened to me. You came out and walked the site. And I just couldn't believe that, you know, with all the sites we have in this district and your, all your responsibilities, you took the time to do that. And I felt so hurt and And I felt so heard and so seen. And I just appreciate that. And even though you're a Steelers fan, I still love you and appreciate you and wish you the best in your retirement. I highly recommend it. But I will warn you that you will be busy still, whether you're doing this kind of thing or something else. But I just thank you so much and enjoy.
Thank you.
I'll say something.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much for the service that you have provided here at Orange Unified. I've worked with you for a little over three years now. And I come in as an educator. And so that's really my wheelhouse and not numbers at all. So, and yet the way you have treated me has been with respect. You're patient, you're kind, you're informative. As Dave said, you're visionary. You value fiscal health and make it a priority. But what I would like to highlight more than anything is just your even tone and the way that you can decompress a room and that you have made me laugh and I think the room laugh. And when I, every time I hear someone say, "Don't steal my thunder," I'm going to think of you. I think that's what you say, right?
That's one of them.
Thank you.
I just, I mean, everything's been said. And we've had many conversations over the years. And I just want to thank you for the tremendous amount of service you've put into this district, especially the financial stability, which is paramount in today's times of what we're having to face here in the next, you know, two, three, four years, whatever it's going to be. So you are leaving us with a good, sound financial portfolio. And so really, really glad. And I just want to say thank you overall. Because I thought enough has been said. Not enough, but they've all said it. So, but yes, thank you.
Now, I don't know if you noticed, but you know, Dave is the deputy, but there is a sheriff. And so his wife is here. And I don't know if you knew that, Dave, and his family. And so we'd like them to join Dave up at the podium.
Thank you so much for being here.
No, thank you. We're missing one, but she had a work tonight.
So with all our appreciation, we have this gift for you. If you want to open it now, we do have scissors. And we also have a cake to celebrate you. And we will be taking a recess to be able to celebrate Dave. And there's enough cake for everyone in the audience. But we just want to take this time to appreciate you. And here's the cake now.
I think the cake, we got UCLA theme and Steelers theme. And so... And so, Board President, we're taking a 10-minute recess?
Yes, we will take a 10-minute recess. Thank you so much.
Good, thank you.
There you go.
Orange Unified. Thank you, Dave.
There you go. We're going to miss you. Did you want a picture?
Right here?
...
All right, folks, two-minute warning, two-minute warning.
Welcome back, everybody. And I truly appreciate the time that we took to pause to truly appreciate Mr. Rivera. As we continue with our meeting, I know I had asked our board to share some comments. But if there's any additional board recognition of students, staff, or community, I welcome any comments. Okay, Trustee Yamazaki.
Thank you. I just want to say it was an honor to be able to attend all the mini-promotions and graduations in the last two weeks. It was so wonderful to shake all the hands and see all the smiles. Obviously, you saw the video and the pictures. And we are so honored to be able to be there. I myself went to El Rancho, Santiago Charter School, Yorba Middle School, Canyon Hills, Adult Transition, Fletcher Kindergarten, and the five high schools, along with many of my colleagues. And so it was exhausting, but it was totally worth it because just being there, it meant so much. And so I want to thank all the teachers and the, all the accomplishments, and recognize all the accomplishments of the students. So that was really wonderful. I also want to say, I want to thank the parents and the PTA who supported the Fletcher Falcon Fest. Trustee Paige, Trustee, I can't, it's already been two weeks, and so I can't remember who was there. And I want to say that it was a really fun community event with food, activities, and performances. And so many community members came out, and it's really great to see that. This is what I envision our schools would be like, is like having our community support the schools. Jordan Elementary School also, sorry, Jordan Academy also had an end-of-the-year performance with their Ballet Folklorico and Mariachi. And we're pleased to offer these programs and these opportunities to our students through our ELOP students. And they were so cute. They were singing and dancing, and we have videos. And they're just so talented. It was amazing. I also attended the Canyon High Senior Award Ceremony, the Al Medina Award Ceremony. And I can tell you that I was so impressed with the achievements of our students. And they were long, but that's because there was so much to recognize. I also want to recognize Orange Homegrown Education Farm. They have a youth leadership program, and I don't know if many of you know, but many high school students attend this program. And they get to have hands-on activities. They visit different venues. And basically, they're learning from how food is sourced, how it's sustained, and how it's used. So one of the examples I can give you is they went to the new hotel, I think it's called Richland Hotel. And they learned how to do catering, and they observed how one of their restaurants was run, and they even participated. So this opportunity for our students was wonderful because they have hands-on experience, and they can take that with them when they go to college. And there was one student who is getting a scholarship to go to Tuscany, and she's going to be doing something over there. So I thought that was amazing. And not only that, the Orange Homegrown offers them scholarships, and so each of the students got a scholarship. So that, if you know any of your students who want to participate, I really highly, highly encourage them. And well, I'll leave some to my colleagues for exposition of the arts. We attended that over at the district office. It was great to see all the artwork here and many of the students who were recognized. And let's see, I also went to Al Medina for the Ecological Poster Exhibit. And Trustee Erickson and I went to that. And a teacher, Jessica Anderson, put together an exhibit that their students did. And they basically went into the local area, and they had to pick a project, and so they had to talk about it. One of them was about, what was that, the plants in the riverbed? Yeah, yeah, betta fish. And so anyways, it was really great because it's sort of similar to a science fair where you would go up to them, and they would talk about their project. And so the last two weeks have been busy, needless to say. And I just really want to wish everyone a great summer, and we'll see everyone back in the fall, unless you're in summer school. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Yamazaki. Would anyone else like to comment? Okay.
So we don't have to repeat anything, but we do post everything, all of our visits, on our social media pages. So if you're interested in seeing some of these things, like the Orange Homegrown was really cool. It was the largest class they've ever graduated, and it's a nine-month course. And they have to attend, I think, seven out of nine courses. So it's really, really interesting, and we try to post about all of these things so you can learn more about these programs. So if you are on social media, check us out.
Great. Thank you for summarizing that. We'll move on to approval of the minutes for May 9, 2024. May I have a motion? Trustee Pelley, thank you. A second?
A second.
Trustee Erickson, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes pass seven-zero. Now, public comment. Trustee Erickson.
We do not have any, all of our public comment cards are for item seventeen.
Okay, thank you. Now we move on to action items. A, public hearing proposed 2024 through 2027, year one, Local Control and Accountability Plan, our LCAP. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez and Dr. Schaefer will present on this item.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening to our board presidents, our esteemed board members, our superintendent, executive cabinet, our staff here, and the community present, and everyone watching from home. Our public hearing tonight is about the implementation of the Local Control Funding Formula and the LCAP regulations that require every district's LCAP public hearing to be held in advance and at a separate meeting prior to the LCAP adoption. The intent of the LCAP hearing is to allow for public comment and recommendations regarding the specifications and expenditure proposed to be included in the LCAP and budget. Further, the regulations require that the public hearing for the budget be held at the same meeting as the public hearing for the LCAP. The development and adoption of the LCAP is a state-mandated strategic planning process for districts across the state of California. So I'm going to go into the overview, and for those that aren't familiar, I'm going to put in more simpler terms that this is really our tool to really demonstrate the stories of how, what, and why programs, services, and initiatives are selected to meet the needs of our students. This is a huge undertaking. It's almost the whole entire school year with collaboration from all our departments to bring this document to life. In this document, we respond to our students' and community needs, and they're gathered through multiple avenues. And this document is also used to address any performance gaps. So this is about 125 pages, so we will try to give you a nice, quick summary overview tonight. So as a refresher, it is a required plan. This is the beginning, the first year of a three-year plan, so it's a brand-new template for us. It focuses on the eight state priorities. But the main focus of the plan is to make sure that we are supporting those students that are English learners, low-income, foster youth, and they're including also those experiencing homelessness. We have to get all of this work done by June 30, and we have to make sure that our actions meet the students' needs and that they can continue from plan to plan. So we can continue our actions as long as they're still effective. And each year, we evaluate to determine if there's any adjustments needed. So the next piece is the LCAP packet. This is what we'll be turning into our county. The first piece of it is the Budget Overview for Parents. You do have a copy of that. And the Budget Overview basically highlights the total amount being allocated in our LCAP, and it also compares it to the entire LCFF budget that we receive as a district. And the LCAP monies usually are about 10% of that LCFF revenue. And the annual update is the next piece that we have to turn in. You do not have a copy of that because I presented that back in February, but the county wants it when we turn all of this in. And then the final piece is the actual LCAP that you have the copies of. And inside the LCAP, we have our actions, our goals. We have the action tables, which actually shows all the expenditures per action. And then, for some reason, they want the instructions included with the LCAP. So every district has to include the instructions as part of the final document. So one of our biggest endeavors is actually soliciting the input on our programs, services, and initiatives. And this stems from a variety of sources. One we have here is our survey, and then we have also our focus groups. So you can see for our survey this year, we almost reached 13,000 total surveys from our community, our students, and our staff. And in our focus group, we had over 1,000 people experiencing these focus groups at every site. And you can see we had elementary, secondary students, as well as the staff at those sites and parents. And then we had these also during committee meetings. Committee meetings that we have at the district level also hold focus groups. So we try to get the word out and trying to ask about how our services are going, what changes you'd like to see. And in addition to that, those district committees are also, as they meet, they are also getting input throughout the school year. Now I'm going to ask Dr. Sandy Schaefer, the Director of Accountability, to share the results of our survey, plus a little bit more in depth about the rest of the plan.
Thank you. Okay, so as you can see, Elena had mentioned, Mrs. Rodriguez had mentioned about the focus groups and our LCAP survey. The LCAP survey has a unique feature to it. The very end of the survey has an opportunity for our participants to answer a question, a qualitative question. And with this, we can gather, we can gather information from our participants that tells us a little bit more about what it is that they're thinking and feeling. So at the end of this whole process, our department summarizes all of this information, and we look for trends. We look for opportunities to see what ideas, what concerns, what opinions appear over and over again in and among the different stakeholder groups. So as you can see in the table in front of you and on the screen, that we look for the top five in each of the stakeholder groups. So I'll use the first one as an example, the family and community participants. When we gathered all of the thousands of inputs and we looked for trends, we saw that the top five for the parents or families that responded were something along the lines of happy, happy with school, happy with our school, wording along those lines. The second most repeated comment was wording that involved the need to improve our facilities. After that, sports extracurriculars, followed by some unhappiness with district politics, and then finally, improve school cleanliness. What we do from this point on is we color-code these items so that we, and you as a district, we are able to see whether or not these items repeat themselves for the different groups. So for example, happy with school was the number-one repeated item amongst the parents and families that responded. But it was also in the top five for elementary students, and it was in the top five for our secondary students. We can see that improving school cleanliness appeared in all four of the stakeholder groups. So it's very telling for us to see what are the items or the concerns in each group, and what are the concerns that go and transcend all of our groups. Now, that process is very similar with our focus groups. We take all of the information that we receive from the focus groups at every one of our sites and the information that we receive on the focus groups from the committees and the focus groups that we conduct in the Office of Accountability, and we do that same process. We analyze all of the information. We pull it apart. We look for trends or ideas that repeat over and over again. And then we color-code once again to see whether those items repeat or transcend the different groups. And again, as you can see, for example, parents over and over in the focus groups offered comments somewhere along the lines of happy with after-school programs, and we saw that same idea repeat for students. Interesting and telling for us, we saw that upgrading facilities, once again, was consistently repeated for all three of the groups. So this gives us an opportunity to get a feel for what's happening in each group and among the different groups. Oops, sorry about that. So as Mrs. Rodriguez was talking about, we use this information, these stakeholder groups, and the survey and the qualitative responses on the surveys to help us formulate the actions. And as she mentioned, many of our actions repeat. But before we change actions or add actions or delete actions, we use this information. We use information from observational data, which is district leadership going out to school sites. And we also use intensive academic data analysis. We use all four of these when it comes to adding or amending or eliminating goals, or, excuse me, actions in our LCAP. So specifically, our LCAP this year, you might notice, if you've been familiar with it the last few cycles, it looks a little bit different. As Mrs. Rodriguez mentioned, this is our opportunity to start a new cycle, a new three-year cycle. And so we took this opportunity to change the template just a little bit. In the past, these last couple of cycles, we have used the District Strategic Plan as the guide for our goals. And we used the EDGE, they're the letters of the acronym for EDGE, to guide us in our goals. And we had four that reflected the E, the D, the G, and the E. This time around, since the strategic plan is sunsetting, coming to an end in '25, it was decided that we would mirror our LCAP to the California Dashboard. And the California Dashboard has three goals, so you'll see a change right there. And I'm going to talk about them just a bit more in depth here. Goal one on the California Dashboard, and now goal one in the Orange Unified LCAP, is academic performance. And this goal surrounds all of the actions that have to do with language arts, that have to do with math, EL progress, and the College and Career Indicator. This is also where you will find the local indicator for the implementation of our academic standards. Goal two is now academic engagement. And this is the section of the LCAP where you will find all of our actions that address chronic absenteeism, graduation rate, and the local indicator of accessing the broad course of study. And the third goal in our LCAP is called Conditions and Climate, just like the California Dashboard. And this is where you will find all of our actions for suspension rate. This is also, the local indicators are here for what we call our basics, which is teachers, facilities, and instructional materials. And also, you'll find parent-family engagement in this section, as well as our climate survey. So these are the goals that you will now see in the LCAP. Now, I just got done saying that we have three goals, and we mirror those goals to the California Dashboard. But lo and behold, I'm going to talk to you about goal four. And you may say, well, what is goal four? Well, I'm also going to, at the same time, talk to you about what is the Equity Multiplier. For many of you, that is something that we're starting to hear a lot about. So I wanted to take a moment today to share with you a little bit of information about that. The Equity Multiplier is additional funding from the state of California. It is not LCFF funds. It is additional monies coming from the state of California. And it looks to support schools in which we have high, they call it non-stability. We often refer to it as mobility rate, a high mobility rate of over 25% and high socio-economically disadvantaged percentages of over 70%. The Equity Multiplier now, according to the Orange County Department of Ed, must be an additional goal in your LCAP. So when we first planned, we thought we would have three, just like the California Dashboard. But we now have to add a fourth one to address this Equity Multiplier funding that we received. The Equity Multiplier, any actions that we fund with this money must be research-based, and the school sites must also address these funds in their school plan. As you can see, we have two school sites in our district that are receiving Equity Multiplier funds for the first time. That's our Community Day School and Richland Continuation High School. And you can see on the slide and on your packet how they qualified for that. They both had high non-stability rates and very high socio-economically disadvantaged percentages. The estimated funding for Community Day School will be $50,000 per year, and Richland will receive $289,000 per year. These are not one-time funds. These are funds that will continue. We like to say, you know, until further notice, until legislation changes or perhaps the California budget changes. But for now, these are funds in addition to our LCFF funding, and they will continue until we hear otherwise. So very quickly, I'd like to share with you what our Equity Multiplier goal is. And I have one small change that I will tell you as I go through this. And our goal reads that within three years, all of our students, particularly those low-income, EL, and Hispanic students at Richland and Community Day School, will demonstrate growth towards meeting and exceeding standards, excuse me, as measured by CASP and our local benchmarks. In addition, the percentage of our EL students making progress in language proficiency will exceed that 14.5% that was achieved this year, 2023. And the percentage of students, those low-income, Hispanic, and EL students prepared for college and career will exceed the .8 that we achieved this year. The reason we originally did not include CDS in that second line of the descriptor was that we don't actually have percentages for Community Day School because the subgroup is so small. And so their numbers don't reflect on the California Dashboard. However, after much discussion, we decided that that population is similar to that of Richland. And so although we don't have actual scores on the dashboard for that school, we are obviously going to include them within this goal, goal four.
Hope you're still with us. Okay, I'm taking it home now. So in order for this process to be more targeted, CDE decided that we needed new actions that were very targeted. So what you can see here is that any LEA that has 30 or more English learners, that's us, they have to have actions in their LCAP. So what we did on this slide is sort of show you the actions that correspond to each of these requirements. So there's now also a focus on So there's now also a focus on our long-term English learners, also called LTALs, and technical assistance. That technical assistance is basically the county supporting us if we have, let me look at what I have here, if we have a student group performance in two or more state priority areas that shows red on the Dashboard, or the performance on a local indicator as, as being not met, and then finally, if you have one performance group not, that they're red, and then also the local indicator not met, we get technical assistance from the county, and they support us to improve those outcomes. And we have that action listed. Then if we have a school in our district with at least one red indicator on the Dashboard, we have to have that action, and we've listed those references. Any student groups in our district with at least one red indicator, or student groups within any school that have one red indicator. So those are the new actions. And finally, I want to share just what's new, changed, or eliminated. So I've listed up there the actions that have been eliminated, and from the prior LCAP to this new LCAP, there have been some changes, and some of the actions we took out because they were no longer needed as a standalone, they've been embedded with other actions, or they were something that were provided by an outside consultant that now we're doing internally with our own staff. And then our new actions that we are highlighting might look familiar to you because these are a lot of initiatives that have come on board in the past couple of years, and some of these are not actually funded by LCFF funds, but we put them in there because they are addressing the needs of those targeted population of students. And then the little red flag over there, we wanted also to comment, is that in the LCAP, we have to sort of highlight if there is any support happening for what we call a CSI school, a comprehensive support and improvement school. And these are schools that are designated as the lowest 5% of the Title I schools in California. We did have a school in that designation, but now they've exited, so we're, that section we didn't have to actually address, so we're pretty proud of that. So now, our next steps really are to continue to solicit feedback during this time before the board adoption in a couple of weeks. We have it posted on our website, it's under our LCAP-LCFF page, so anybody can be giving us feedback, they can email us at lcap@orangeusd.org. And Sandy and I will be back at the next meeting, hopefully to get this adopted, but we will also share about our local indicators and the progress we've made with those. And those will go with everything else of our, our student data on the Dashboard that will be released in early December. So now, we'd be happy to answer any questions, but also want to offer you, because it's such a dense document, there's a lot there, if you would like to set up time with, to meet with us, you know, separately, happy to do that. We've done that in the past, and we can do that again. So, that's all I got right now.
Thank you so much. The equity multiplier is definitely new.
It is.
And in the LCAP, over 100-page document, it talks about, like, the correlation between low SES and--
Mobility, or this non-stability.
Right. And so it's low SES, and then chronic absenteeism. So is that why the state's really focusing on this specific population and providing funds?
Mm-hmm, definitely.
And what is that going to look like for Richland? So are those funds restricted? Is it something for, like, a specific plan that we need to use that money for, or?
They do have to address in their school plans that they're just turning in, and will bring those for adoption in July, and they, those schools do have to address it there, and it has to be also addressed in the LCAP for the whole world to see, so, and she can share the components.
Of course, of course. The only criteria for the equity multiplier funds are that they must be research-based. They have to be research-based supports and services that go directly to the student, so no facilities, no admin raises, things like that. They are supports and services directly for students that are research-based.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any additional questions or comments from the board? Go ahead, Justice Erickson.
Hi, thank you. And it is very dense, and I probably will take you up on the offer to come see you. So can we, we can get copies of the survey, right? Hard copies, I think we've gotten those in the past.
Yeah, they were in the Friday, sorry, they were in the Friday packet before.
The whole, the actual survey results?
Yeah, we can give that to you.
Oh, awesome, yeah. So I was curious, so I think it's 13,000 that responded to the survey, was that the on, that's the online survey, the one that you can--
You are correct.
--access. Okay, and what were the dates that that was open?
That was from October to beginning of January. We have a very large window, just to try to collect, so.
Okay. And I was trying to remember, was, there was like 16,000 last year, weren't there? It was like record number.
You are correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, and then the number 1,100 was obviously live and in-person interviews. So is there any way, or do you see trends in, or do you have any way to do it, trends from particular, like geographical areas, or school attendance areas, or trends amongst, you know, like, this is supposed to be focused on non-English speakers, foster youth, economically disadvantaged? Are you able to, like, sort of disaggregate and figure out what that population is answering as compared to maybe other populations, so that we make sure we're really considering the, the people that are affected, right?
We work with OCDE, and we haven't asked them to do that, but we have, we have the, the data, asked, you know, where, what school are you at? We do ask if their child is free and reduced, if they're, you know, an English learner, that kind of thing. So we do have that demographic data from the, the parents.
Okay.
You know, so we could pull the parent part and probably give some direction if we wanted to dig a little deeper, but we can definitely do it by school and then connect it to feeders as we do this in the future, you know? I don't know if we can go back now, but--
Right, not necessarily for the LCAP, but that data, I think, might be valuable to see, are we serving students differently in different areas, or is there a perception that we are from the people that are being served? So I'd just be curious about that in the future to maybe use--
Totally, I think it's a great idea.
--in plan. I think that's actually all I was going to ask.
Okay.
Dr. Glass?
And I think this will go to Dr. Schaefer. With respect to the survey, but going into the focus group, I know that on the slide it showed that there was a disaggregation based on the level, so I was just curious about the focus group, and was that information available to be disaggregated so we knew who was involved in the focus group?
For, okay, so, so two, two parts to that. Every school site had their focus groups, so they can provide that information, and are you looking for, for who participated? I think I kind of missed exactly what you're, what you were looking for.
So similarly to the, to the survey itself?
Correct, correct.
So then you, potentially, maybe the, the PTA was selected?
Sure, sure.
Okay, so, so fine, but that would be maybe a high school, or maybe a middle school and elementary school.
Okay, yes.
So I was just curious, with the 1,100 throughout the entire district, do we have that feeder pattern, so that we'd be able to see where those priorities are as well?
So similar, yes, absolutely, yes. And that one is even a little bit easier because it's in-person, we actually identify who was there, so it is easier to see. I, I see the correlation now in your question. Yes, we, we can do that, and we could, we could potentially pull that out a little bit deeper, if that's something that the board would be interested in for next year, absolutely, and for focus groups, that process would, would be even easier. So absolutely, we could do that, of course.
Thank you.
All right. If we don't have any additional comments, we will now close the regular meeting and open up the public hearing at 8:31. All right, thank you. Thank you. Are there any speakers regarding the proposed 2024-2027 Year One Local Control and Accountability Plan comment? And you don't need a blue card to be able to speak, you can just come up and share anything based on what you just heard?
Come on up. Come on down.
No speakers have come up. I will now close the public hearing and reopen the regular board meeting at 8:32. All right, thank you for the presentation. 7B, Public Hearing, 2023-24 Estimated Actuals and 2024-25 Proposed Budget. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, Mr. Rivera and Ms. Balsar will present on this item.
Madam President, distinguished board members, Superintendent Gonzalez, my colleagues in Cabinet, the Orange community that's here and also watching virtually, we're here to discuss the district's annual budget. The process for adopting the budget is a two-step process. First, we have to provide you the facts and information about the budget, have a hearing, and then in two weeks, on, on September, on June 26th, we're going to take the formal action of adopting. The budget has to be heard after the LCAP report, so it's in that sequence. The information is, that I'm going to be presenting tonight includes the may-revise information. So just to update the community on what that means, in January, typically around January 12th, the governor announces the annual budget, his proposed annual budget for the new fiscal year. That budget included some deficit factors, some, the fact that we were deficit spending in the state. In May, he revised his estimates based off the most recent information, and I'll be outlining those changes for you in this presentation. And then a segment of this report is to share with you the budget, the requirements of committing funds, that's, that's the next agenda item, they're going to be taking action, our budget stabilization plan, so ideas and thoughts of how we can improve our fiscal position, and then the next steps for the board. So our team went to the School Services Workshop the third week in, in May, and we're going to highlight for some of, some of you the information that was shared, so I'm not going to read to you, I'm just going to hit some highlights. So basically, what the governor is doing is adopting a budget, recommending a budget that's using one-time funds to fund ongoing expenses, and I'll get into the details of some of those shifts. There's a significant difference between what the governor, the revenues the governor had, thought he had, and what actually materialized, and it's going back to 2223 fiscal year. And also, what we're finding for the first time in probably a decade, is that the Legislative Analyst Office, which is a, a independent agency of the state that critiques the budget, that there's a disparity between that office's projections and the governor's projections through the Department of Finance. And there's a term, a new term that is being developed, which is called the maneuver. There's, and I'll cover that in the report, as to what the governor is intending to do, and what the restrictions are in the, the state, the constitution of the state that prevents the governor to achieve what he is trying to achieve. So when we talk about use of one-time reserves, at one time, we had $8.4 billion in the rainy day fund. This was established by previous Governor Brown, and it was to set aside funds that in case there was a recession, when there was a recession, that this would serve as a parachute to assist rather than making draconian budget cuts. So in the governor's plan, he's planning to spend down the $8.4 billion reserve down to zero within this budget year. And a component of that is funding the cost of living adjustment, which is 1.07. There was action taken a couple of weeks ago to reduce that deficit structure from 42, 44 billion to 27 billion. And you can see the reductions that were outlined. At the time, there wasn't a lot of information. Since we prepared our report, there's been more information coming out. What I find interesting is, in the past, the state has always relied on funding deferrals. And what a funding deferral is, just to give you a simple example, is that in June, we receive our funding to meet payroll. The state delays that funding into the new year, so they don't recognize that expense in the same fiscal year that we do. They shift that expense into the new year, which then seems like you're balancing your budget, but you're really not. You're just deferring that expense to a later date. And that does not coincide with the requirements that we have to reporting revenues and expenses. So there's, none of that is in this budget, which is surprising, but doesn't mean that in the future, that's not going to be a strategy, because it always has shown up eventually by the state as one of the first strategies to adjust the budget. There's also elimination of jobs at the state level for vacancies. I believe those 20,000 vacancies that are unfunded, that are going to be eliminated from the budget. And you can see some delays in funding and reduction in fundings in some of these facility So the statutory, statutory COLA originally started at 3.94%, so if you were looking at it a year ago, we were, we were expected to receive in the budget year almost 4%. That number is now 1.07. The maneuver was to, since we received the funds in 2223, without the revenues being, supporting that, is that he would adjust our funding in the future for this amount, but there's limitations that present, that are preventing the governor from doing that. So in this diagram, when we look at our budgets, we look at a five-year projection, and then we look at different time points of what were we projecting last year for the 2425 year, and how those shifts occurred. So you can see that, when you look at this table, that in 2324, there's $3 billion less than what was in the original projection. And then the out-years are, are pretty flat. You can see in the blue bar, the general fund reserves, or general fund revenues, and then in the orange bar, the property taxes. So you can see that there's been wild shifts in these numbers from one year to the next. So there's three elements that the state has to apply for Prop 98 funding, that's for education. One is, the test one is when we receive about 40% of the funding. Number two is that there's some factors that are considered, such as ADA funding and changes in personal income. And the third is the prior year ADA funding, plus the changes in per capita. So these are the assumptions that we have to use. What the governor is trying to do is to create a fourth category to adjust funding, but he's limited. You're only, you're only constrained by these three categories. So when we look at what has happened between the 2324 enacted budget versus where we find ourselves today, you can see the significant drop in funding, and then the liabilities to Prop 98. So when we talk about the maneuver, the monies that we are receiving, he wants to re-bench at a lower amount. There's an $8.8 billion payment that was made to, to school districts, for which the revenue did not get generated. So this is the amount that the state is trying to take back in some form and fashion that's inconsistent with the guides that we have here in the test one, two, and three. So as we're making our projections, if you were to look back a year ago, two years ago, to see how our funding would have changed, you're going to see a dynamic similar to this, that we started at a certain amount, then it declined, and then there was a small upkeep. So you can see in three different calculations, you're going to get three different sets of numbers. So initially, we were expecting to receive what's on the green line, the green-- the green bar, 3.94. And now that it's been changed to the 1.07 back in January, we're expecting a .76 COLA, which is the red bar. It's upticked a little bit for the COLA calculation. The governor cannot control that number. That's a statistic of the cost of inflation. So that is something that the governor either has a choice to fund or not to fund. So for example, if he could not afford, if the budget cannot afford a 1.07, then he can discount it by 25% to get to the .76 COLA where he was before. But it's only happened a couple of times that the governor suspended the funding for Prop 98 because of budgetary matters. Here's the table that shows us what our funding amounts are per student, per ADA. This assumes perfect attendance. Unlike the workforce, that we get sick days and vacation days, there are no sick days and vacation days for kids. If they do not show up, we do not get funded. So these amounts are high amounts assuming perfect attendance. And then you can see the dartboard, which shows the multi-year projection. And what I'm going to draw to you is a concern that I have here with the multi-year projection, not the calculations, but the fact that this year, we're at a 1.07 COLA. Next year is projected to be in sustained at 3%. So when we look at our five-year projections, well, what happens if we don't maintain a 3% COLA? What does that look like in terms of our planning? And we actually go through this exercise, and we call it a stress test. Say, well, what happens if it's not 2.93, but 1% less? So we did those analysis and calculations just to make sure that our budget was within the constraints that the board is interested in in a multi-year projection in terms of our reserve level. So that is just internal checking and analysis that we do to make sure that if, so the worst-case scenario happens, that we're prepared for that situation. You can see that in, for classified employees, that the state establishes, for both classified and certificate employees, they establish the table and the rates that districts pay. So this is not something that we negotiate. And there's a secondary component of this, of what the employees pay. As a classified employee, I pay 7% of my gross to a pension. Certificate employees pay 10.25. When the LCAP was created, the class, the certificate employees were paying 8%. So in a short period of time, their funding, their out-of-pocket contributions have gone up 25%. And it has nothing to do with raises, that just means that we're paying more for our pension. So you can see the other factors, just as lottery. The old days, this used to be mandated reimbursements, now they give it to us as a block grant. So you can see what the rates are for the different grade levels. So what we don't see in the May revision, which could be in the budget, would be that, you know, there's changes, negotiations that are going on right now. So there could be some commitments that are made that we don't know how that's going to affect us. The TK program right now is not touched. And my concern is moving forward, how is that going to be sustainable if we continue having these budget deficits? And the pots of money that we have for one-time funds, that's not being considered in terms of providing some flexibility. And maybe that should be something that the state should consider because during the Great Recession, there was flexibility provided to districts to unrestrict the restricted programs and to use that to offset budget cuts. So as we look at what the governor's priorities are and what the focus is, that there's, the Assembly and the Legislature are not seeing eye to eye with the governor. So there's some negotiations going on. So we may say some changes because sometimes the governor gets what he wants because of the position and power. And sometimes there needs to be some negotiations that occur. So I'm going to have Ms. Balsara come up and walk us through the district budget and some of the highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Mr. Gonzalez, and Cabinet members, and community members and colleagues. So we have built our budget based on the January budget proposal that Governor provided because if we wait until May, then it will be too late for us to put together the budget. So I'm going to go over the January budget updates. So first component is the enrollment. We are looking at the enrollment. And the green highlighted number is the actual enrollment for our district, and the blue is for the projection. So you may recall that in the past, we have presented that the demographers has the projection of us losing about 500 students each year, and we were able to contend that within that. And that's because of the attract and retain program and the educational offerings that we have in our district. And so we have actually, in the last three years, they were projecting to decline 1,700 per demographer, and we were like close to, you know, half of them. So we are continuing budgeting to decline about 361 for next two years. So recently, Governor changed the funding formula effective 2223 year. And what changed was that the last three years average that we are going to get funded on. So you can see the benefit for each year that we are receiving a higher ADA and funding for our district. These are the assumptions we have utilized to capture the revenue assumptions. So attendance rate, we know that the attendance was very high for our district, about 96% before COVID. And statewide, the attendance is, you know, affected all the districts after COVID. And, but we are fortunate enough to have these student community services who are working with our sites and working with those datas. And we are seeing the result, and it's increasing for our district slowly but steadily. And so we are projecting to budget that 94% each year. Unduplicated pupil percentage, this is the area where our nutrition services and IT came together, and they revised the mail application form. And when I started with this district, it was about 46%. And just in few years, we are in the 60% range. And I'll show you in the later slide what that means for our district shortly. And the cost of living adjustments, we are still utilizing the January .76%. And it's slightly increased, but we know that how, there is no stability in the budget for state. So we are just continuing with the January budget proposal. Employee compensations, as we know, that we has agreed with the agreement. And later tonight, you are going to be reviewing that. And CSE is still under negotiation for 2324. And we are still pending for 2425. So we have not included that as part of our budget. And the annual cost of step-in column, there is annual increments for employees that are part of the step-in column included. And pension increases, as Mr. Rivera mentioned earlier, that is increasing every year for our district and for all the districts throughout the state. And the most important part, textbook adoption. We have included over 16 million for our textbook adoption in the three years. Health and welfare benefits, since we have done the system conversion, sorry, health and welfare conversion from CalPERS to SIS, we have included those savings in our projections. So, sorry. So here are the, you know, another assumptions that we included because if you may recall, last year, we started setting aside athletic, you know, field replacement over 300,000 for 10 years. And so we are setting aside funds for even roof replacement. Last board meeting, board may recall that they approved five sites, Noel Canyon, Orange High School, El Medina, Taft, and Rest Orange for, you know, heavy rain poured this year. And also setting aside safety funds. We have increased the safety funds this year to $1 million because of the needs and also like earthquake supplies and the, you know, other needs. And we are assessing those needs for next out-years. And we are increasing that from 300 to 700 million, 700,000 for right now. Vehicle replacement, also, we are budgeting 400,000 every year from general fund.
So what's important about this slide is that when you develop a budget, it's about managing risk. And how have you considered if something happens or we have repairs? And what happens is that when you're going through budget cuts, which many districts are right now, they stop doing things. Well, there's things that we can't stop doing. If there's a leak in the roof, we need to fix it. If there are repairs in the schools, we need to take care of it. So we have to address our health, life, safety conditions. So what you see here are transfers. So these are monies that we are transferring out of the general fund into a special reserve. When you see RDA, that's our redevelopment agency. So we look at our most restrictive funding first, and then we backfill with the general fund. So when you look at our budget, it takes into consideration risk factors that other districts you may not have seen. So when you see a sustainability plan of $8 million out of the general fund, that means to keeping our essential programs working and moving forward. And you can see what those commitments are. Our vehicle replacement, you're going to hear tonight about buses. So how can we keep our fleet going? Because if buses stop working, and right now, with some of our older fleet, it costs us $15,000 for transmission, $15,000 to $20,000 on an engine. And when we sell those buses, we're lucky if we get $500,000 to $1,000 at a surplus sale. So we're not investing in something that is inadequate, outdated, and inoperable. We're focusing on buying things that are safe and air-conditioned for our kids to benefit from.
Sorry. So here is the chart. And when we talk about unduplicated pupil percentage going above 55%, that's when we start realizing the concentration funds. So this is our first year, 2324 is the first year we are eligible to receive concentration funds. And you can see that it's going up. And every year, about like nine, over 9 million, we are going to be receiving in concentration. So supplemental and concentration funds are directly for the instruction, and they are going directly to classrooms. On the left side, as you can see, the base allocation. So base allocation of current year, 262 million. And we add COLA, it should usually go up. But you can see that it's going down, and that's because of the declining in enrollment and other factors that's affecting. Even, you'll see that from 2324 to 2728, you are seeing the increase of about 5 million. But that's not enough for, you know, our size of the school district. And the base allocation really is for running the school district. So that's the, you know, area we are looking at. So all those assumptions that I shared earlier, it put together the budget. And total revenue includes the CFF revenue, that's our major source of revenue, and federal resources, state and local revenue combined. And similar to expenditures is for all the programs. And as you can see, the change in fund balance is a positive amount. That is a good sign that we are not relying on ending fund balance. So many of the districts seeing the change in fund balance as a negative, and they are called deficit spending because they are relying on their reserve for their annual cost. So we are not doing that. So that's a good sign. And also, we are building healthy reserve for our district. As you can see, from 2324, we are ending with 219 million to 247 million in 2627 year. So this slide is really showing you the, how we have to allocate the ending fund balance. And we have a requirement to fulfill all the district for our size. We have to have at least minimum 3% of reserve for emergencies. And that's for us, about 11 to 12 million. And we have healthy reserve, as I mentioned. And there are some restricted program balances. You can see in the 56 and 44 million in range. And those are in the next slide. And the other item I want to highlight is the commitments. The commitments, we have the requirement that anytime we have over 10% of reserve, we have to set aside and commit those funds. And we have the next item for you to approve. So I'm going to go over the restricted balances in next. So these are the programs that are going from more than one year. So we are having ending fund balance this year, which is equivalent to 56.7 million. And next year, we are going to be utilizing some of those funds, and it will leave 44 million in change. Here are some of the other programs that you are not going to be seeing. But these are the programs that we have more than one year to spend. And so if we don't spend in one year, we can defer that to the following year. And so we are planning to have another 5 million in carryover this year. And then next year, we are planning to utilize those funds. And most of them are restricted. So they both combined, we have over 61.7 million in restricted funds. And next year, it's going to be 44 million. So in 2014, the Proposition 2 was approved, and it was related to the reserve that state, you know, started putting the funds aside in the rainy day fund. And when that rainy day fund exceeds the 3% of reserve, then that applies to the district for them to not have more than 10%. And if they do have more than 10%, they need to set aside and commit and take it to board for their approval. So we are going to have the next item for you to consider for approval, and that's more than the 10%. And we need those reserves for our district because of the uncertainty of the funding levels, the state's deficits that has been happening, and the enrollment decline that we are, you know, all these districts and we are facing as well, and the absenteeism, and higher pension cost. So we have strategically calculated all the scenarios as Mr. Rivera mentioned, stress test. And we have looked into the various scenarios. What if we lose more enrollment than what we are projecting? What happens when we are having, you know, attendance decline like a higher than what we anticipated? So all those combined together, these are the, you know, amounts that we put together. And we started by highest to lowest. And the total, this is the 100, hold on. This is total commitments of 135.9 million. And this is for 2425 year.
So when we're looking at, just going back a slide, because of the uncertainty at the state level, we have to be more conservative. We don't know, because we're highly reliant on the state funding. We don't know how the state's going to react, how long it's going to be. So we have to take a position of, okay, well, what happens if this is going to last for three years? Four years? What is it that we need to do? So we identified here some categories of budgeting for uncertainty. So when you look at fiscal emergencies, that's in year one. That number is growing over a five-year projection. And I believe in the fifth year, we was pretty close to $100 million that we've set aside in our stress test to make sure if something happens, that we're not spending those funds because we may not be receiving those funds, or the state may take some different actions. So, and also, the more that we have in our reserves because of cash flow, if the state starts with deferrals, we need to make sure that we have enough cash to meet our payroll.
That was it. That was it. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions. You may have. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
None.
Thank you.
So our budget stabilization plan. So I want to leave you with some closing thoughts of how to make the district even stronger than what it is now. So we have four categories we're going to talk about. So what I did is I went back to our books, and I said, well, how much are we paying for our pensions? So on the left-hand side, you can see what we're paying on an annual basis for STIRS, for our certificated contributions. So you can see from twenty-twenty-one to projected out in twenty-six, twenty-seventh, it's an increase of almost nine million dollars. For classified employees, because the rate's rising, you can see that number's going from nine and a half to, it's going to be hitting sixteen million dollars. So in total, we're going to be increasing our pension contributions and our budget projections by fifteen million dollars. The state, when they adopted the LCFF, they said, here, you're going to get more money. And by the way, we're going to shift costs that we were paying to the districts. So they gave us the money, but they also gave us the bill. And you can see what the difference is. Not only are we paying, but employees are paying more for their pensions than they ever have. So that's the problem. And that's when we build our projection, is included into our budget projections. So what can the district do about it? So the consideration is to establish a pension stabilization plan. So we have an OPEB stabilization plan for our medical benefits, which right now, if I look at the last financials, it states that we have about a hundred-and-seventeen million dollars worth of assets, and our liabilities is a little bit over seventy-five million. So we're overfunded by thirty-two million dollars. Those funds can only be used for retiree benefits. It's an irrevocable trust. But that's not to say that we can't establish and transfer some of those funds, and we need to work with our legal. So then that way, we can start generating monies to pay the pensions. So instead of the general fund paying for the pensions, our overfunded trust could pay for the pensions. That's going to take some work, establish a resolution. The last time we did this was in two thousand and six, when we established the OPEB trust. But that would be a good way of helping, because we only can do something, we only can have limited access to the OPEB trust, but why not shift those excess reserves to help with our pensions? So instead of us funding fifteen million dollars of cost, let our trust pay for a portion of that. And that means you can keep more money in the classroom and not have to make budget There's another program that I want to talk about, which is our CARES program, and it's an enterprise fund, which means that we can legally generate surplus. So there's very few opportunities that the district can generate money. So let me talk about this box here and what this box means. From our demographer's report, they provide us information about how our grade cohort progresses. So if you see a number of one-point-oh, that means that a hundred percent of the kindergartners went to first grade, because this is a first, kinder through first analysis. If you see a number higher than one-point-oh, that means that there is a growth from kindergarten to first grade. And I'll tell you why there's a growth in kindergarten and first grade, is because we have limited space for kindergarten, because what's important for the parents is they need to enroll in childcare. If they don't have childcare, they're not going to enroll their child. So there's a limited number of slots. We have a number of vacancies, because our pay rate is not as competitive as those people working at a restaurant at twenty dollars an hour, because the governor made a change. So I think as we look at, and also, the TK program is expanding, so there's, there's, that has been an issue for us in terms of the, creating this space issue. So if I go to the cells that are all in green, you can see that the growth at the schools are anywhere from one percent to as high as seventeen percent at Crescent. So there's a loss opportunity here, because we're not, I mean, we, we are funded, we are funded for three different reasons. More kids, more kids, more kids. So we need to look at some strategies of how we can provide more space. So you may ask, is the CARES program profitable? So you can see for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, which was the last year, these are actuals, they generate six-point-two million dollars of revenues, expenditures of four million, so they made just a little bit under two million dollars. And their reserves right now is two-point-seven million. So everything, so when you look at this number, we're at two-point-seven, it's going to go up by two million, maybe even five million, up to five million. So in a three-year projection, you're projecting to go from two-point-seven to four-point-seven to six-point-seven to eight-point-seven. It's a lot of money being generated, and it's not even fully realizing its potential. Because we were able to increase some slots in CARES, you can see the number of kids here that enrolled in the district that were from outside the district. They were coming from Manhattan Beach, Huntington Beach, private schools within, within Anaheim Hills. So we captured forty-some kids new to the district. That's a half a million dollars for ADA funding. So when CARES win, we win. There's a waiting list, and it's projected, like I said, it's projected that we're going to be in the eight to nine million dollar range. So what I would encourage the board to look at is to look at expanding the program, look at addressing how we can eliminate the waiting list, because if we eliminate the waiting list, we're going to have more kids enroll in the district. Look at the fiscal viability, if we adjust salaries. As I looked at projections, if we're able to fill these vacant, vacant positions and look at providing more services, then you're going to have a hundred to two-hundred kids enroll in our district that are not currently in the district. And what can we do with the surplus? After we establish a threshold for the CARES program, because they don't need nine or ten million dollars in their reserve, we're working with them on looking at portables, because there's a need to add portables, because they have space issues. And we are looking at our developer fee account, which we have five million dollars. So I'd rather spend money from developer fees and not touch these revenues, because these revenues can be used to serve, provide services to students and provide us to eliminate budget cuts. So that's item number one that I would recommend the board consider. Since I'm on a roll, I'm going to talk about food services. So back when I started in the district, we didn't have much reserves. And we've been, made some programmatic decisions. We've hired a dynamic director. The state is now providing funding for students. So you can see that we're growing at a three-and-a-half million dollar per year in our reserves. We are constrained because we have vacancies. So even though we're growing our reserves by three-and-a-half million, we have twenty positions that we haven't been able to fill. Again, because people are working in the private sector, because they're able to make more money in the private sector. But there's a limitation. And I don't know what the state's thinking, but every time we get ahead of the game, they come up with new rules that block us from being efficient. So there's a limitation that we only can have six months' reserves. So by law, we have to come up with a capital expenditure plan and submit that to CDE for approval. They can buy equipment and supplies, they cannot improve the facilities. That's a, that's a prohibited expense. But what's the, what's some, some options? Well, if we have to spend money, why don't we put the money to work and fill vacancies? Look at the viability of a salary adjustment. Look at how we can partner between the different programs. So if they have money to buy equipment, and if I just use Canyon Hills, Canyon High School as an example, which has really tripled and quadrupled the number of meals that they're serving the kids, even though we have an empty, open campus, kids aren't going off campus, they're staying on our campus, and we're feeding them. So what happens if we use, if we try to replicate that? And if we look at the other school sites that we have and look at some state matching funds, which is not our money, this is money that we've gotten from the state. So for example, we have two million dollars from Orange High in state matching funds. So what happens if we leverage those dollars, have food services, buy the equipment, and we partner and we try to replicate something comparable to what we have at Canyon? Not only are, not only are kids going to eat, not only can we better serve the kids, but our test scores are going to go up. Yes?
Thank you. Can that money be used for improving school, the food and nutrition?
Which money?
The extra money you said that we have to use.
The, yes, the money, the money has to be spent back into the program.
Right.
So either...
So are we making it a priority to, like, improve the food, since it was mentioned in the LCAP?
So we haven't...
Students want better food?
Yeah, we haven't started the process yet.
Okay.
So, so the process that these monies that I'm talking about, that you improve the program, you hire staff, so part of that element could be in the, in the offering to students.
Yeah, I'd like to see us offer more variety and more nutrition.
And I think, you know, but...
Food prepared onsite as opposed to packaged and delivered.
And, Mr. Rivera, I think that goes to your point as well when it comes to the equipment, because some of the equipment in the kitchens right now is not working, so a lot of what, what's made at the central kitchen and delivered and warmed at the site, as opposed to what Mr. Rivera mentioned about Canyon High School, where they have, you know, state-of-the-art facilities, large facilities, and they're able to do more scratch cooking, which then equals more students eating. Because when we were there a few weeks ago, the kitchen staff there was talking about how they just sell out every day with burritos and the breakfast sandwiches that they make from scratch there in the kitchen. So some of that will add capabilities to the staff at the site, and then I think it will improve the quality of the food and the participation. So I think the two go hand in hand.
And we also have included a new nutritionist, right? So we've created a new position to help with...
Yeah. But it wasn't mentioned directly? I mean, I know all those things would contribute to it, but I want to see the outcome is to make sure that we are providing more nutritious food for our kids and also have more of a variety or, or our offerings expanded.
No, those are good comments. So once we have something in place, then it gives us more flexibility, because you have other agencies that are going through budget cuts that are eliminating services. So it puts us in a position that if we have the facilities, we can sell our excess capacity and provide services and actually generate revenue for the districts. And that's what I'm referring to, contracting out.
Okay.
So whether it be to a city, whether it be because, you know, private schools and charter schools have to find a provider, so if we can do it at a discounted price and still it makes sense for us, then that just means we have more, we're going to be generating more monies for our programs.
So when you say...
To make our programs even richer.
Contracting out, are you talking about meals? Are you talking about catering services?
I'm talking about that we are providing services to other agencies.
Okay, so like, preparing meals for like a senior citizen center, for example?
Correct. Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Rivera, also, where are some potential opportunities and where we could explore revenue sharing opportunities in conjunction with the ASB, PTA, and booster foundation clubs? Just provide some examples, please.
Okay, so before you steal my thunder, I was going to go there. So if we have the staff, right now, we're not able to serve at Kelly Stadium, because our employees get there at four or five o'clock in the morning. We're shorthanded twenty, you know, twenty positions. So when it comes to the football games, very, it's a very limited offering. So what happens if we were able to provide the food and then work with our business partners and say, okay, because it's difficult to do fundraising nowadays. So what happens if food services provides the food, and then we have volunteers with these different agencies, and that we can do revenue sharing? So for example, we provide, let's say, nachos or sliders. So we're going to increase our revenues, we may not have the workforce, but we can partner with these different groups, so in that way, they will get a percentage of the sales. And that could help them with their program. And we can target it by school. So we have El Medina playing Villa Park. We have two, we have two venues that we could work with them, so then that way, everyone's generating some money for their program. Right now, that's not happening, but that could be the potential if we go through and start implementing some change. Transportation. You know that our director is very active in getting funding for our buses, and that has not changed. So you can see that we've obtained ten-point-eight million dollars in grant funding. On the board tonight, you're going to have another opportunity to approve additional grant funding for the district, that we're going to be able to obtain six million dollars worth of buses for a cost of two million dollars and four million dollars in grant funding. So we're basically paying twenty-five percent for a bus. So the reason I bring this up is that unless you keep it in front of you, you become complacent. So as there's opportunities that come up, I encourage the district to look at these opportunities, take advantage of the opportunities, because one-third of our fleet is going to be new. So we're not going to be spending money on outdated equipment, spending fifteen, twenty thousand dollars on a piece of equipment that doesn't have a book value of five hundred. We have all these new buses. So we're going to be more efficient, you're going to be starting, you're going to start seeing significant savings in our utilities. I received a report that for the buses that we do have, I think it's seventeen buses that we do have, for this past year, we were spending about thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars in electricity. Very low amounts. So we're going to see, so if gas prices are high, we're not impacted as much, because we have electric. And electric cost to run a bus is very cost-efficient. So the next steps for the board is that we have tonight's hearing. We need to adopt the resolution for the committed, the commitment of funds. In thirteen days, we're going to be adopting the budget on June twenty-sixth. Since we've already presented the presentation to you, there's not going to be a presentation that night, it's going to be reported, published as reported. And then we're going to be working with the county office to have them adopt our budget and move forward with the implementation of the budget. When the governor signs the budget, it's called the forty-five-day revise. So you're going to get an update in the new year, forty-five days after the board, after the governor signs the budget, to share any material impacts. Our process is that you're going to be receiving the unaudited actuals, which happens, has to happen by September fifteenth. That's going to have our unaudited report, and what that simply means is that is our projections of the actuals. After the auditors go through the process and confirm those numbers, a change from unaudited to audited actuals. And then that becomes fixed as a final number moving forward. So this is not done by any individual, it's done by a team, and this is the strongest fiscal team I've ever worked with. So you're good, you're in good hands. I told them if they mess up, I'm going to come back and haunt them. I have not given them my book of all my Davisms, so they have to earn that. But we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this point.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rivera, for a very thorough report. Any questions?
Madam President, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
This is way back before, but I just wanted a clarification on pay...
This is way back before, but I just wanted a clarification on slide 28. It talks about site donations and 900,000 estimated totals. Can you explain what that is, the site donations?
Sure. So we receive donations from our school sites, we receive donations from the community. So by law, we have to set aside those funds to honor the spirit of that donation. So at the end of the year, we have collected $903,000 that has not been spent.
Okay.
Sometimes they give us money for, like to pay stipends for coaches.
But most of them are restricted then?
They're all restricted.
Or dedicated to something?
Yes, they're all restricted.
Okay, I wanted to make sure, because when you say you're carrying it over, it just sounds like, oh, do we have, did some generous person donate money so you can do whatever you want with it?
No, I can't, I can't find that person, no. So these are all given to us with parameters of how to spend it.
Okay.
And there's a good portion of that that deals with the high school sports.
Okay.
And donations for coaches and other operating costs.
Okay, I just wanted some clarification on that item.
And this is traditional, the amounts may change, but you're going to see that as a line item every year.
It just seems higher than in the past, is it?
And it could, and it could be that some of the expenses haven't been paid.
Okay.
So we're paying expenses right now at year end, so some of this may be depleted in July.
Okay, thank you. Now, are there any, so the parameters for those are just mostly done by whoever donated? And they will say it'll get spent by this time or whatever?
If you...
So it's not like, has to be spent?
Correct.
Per, by this, you know, per the state?
Some of this is not time sensitive.
Okay.
And if you look at the donations section of our agenda?
Yeah.
There's an Excel spreadsheet that we provide that shows the donor and shows the purpose and the amount.
Okay. But usually that is done after, not before, right? Or is it...
We bring, we bring that report to the board every month.
Every, yeah, every time you receive the donation?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ottega?
Yeah, thank you. Real quick, because I would rather believe the LAO's estimates than the governor's estimates, which is about half difference. In running your stress tests, worst-case scenario, LAO's estimated at what, close to $80 billion? 76, somewhere around there?
Their, yeah, their numbers, the governor is acknowledging that it's $43 billion.
But the LAO is estimating, wasn't it like 75, 76?
Yeah, it was, it was significantly higher.
Well, you don't have to go back to it. All I'm asking is, in running your stress tests, you know, for us to give our, say, worst-case scenario, would we have to make some structural cuts?
I always believe in making budget corrections timely. I never tell the board or tell my constituents, we don't have to make budget cuts, because there's a lost opportunity there. And what I mean by that is, you know, let's say we move forward on the CARES suggestion.
Right.
Why not move money into the general fund to offset against budget cuts? Even if you put that into reserves, it's your rainy day fund. So I always believed to be active and to be proactive in doing things, because if I wait until year five, then what I'm going to have to cut is going to be so much greater. So I can, I can reduce that by planning ahead and making changes. So I'd rather cut $1 over five years than cut $5 all at once. So, so in our stress tests, at this point, we're not required to make cuts, even though we're making corrections, either through revenue enhancements or expenditure reductions.
Aside from implementing what you're recommending, from those, which they're all good ideas.
So we're doing that as a matter of practice?
Yeah.
And when we had our budget, our budget stabilization summit in October, we went over with the cabinet team and our executive directors what those options are. So, so we were planning last October for some things that we can strategize and implement now, before the governor even announces budget.
Because that's my concern, is that they're not really wanting to be effective in trying to solve this problem. Like as you said, in the verbiage they're using is maneuvers. And, you know, we've seen that in the past too, that's, oh, we won't fund you till July 1 versus, you know, June for the new fiscal. But I, I'm just concerned because of the way the budget sits. And I'm not saying ours, I'm just from the state, that's what I've been on for the last couple of times, so. So it's good to know that we're running the worst-case scenarios, if in the event, it's not the governor's number but the LAO's number, which is much greater to the tune of $30, $40 billion.
So here's another Davism. We plan for the worst and we hope for the best. So then that way, in case something happens, we're not caught short.
Right.
And Mr. Rivera, just to further that conversation on the stress test, you also presented some of those thoughts on our stress tests with the county office of education, right? Can you kind of let us know a little bit more about that?
Sure. So it's always, it's good, it's always good to confirm with the county your thinking to make sure that you haven't overlooked anything. So Ms. Basar and I met with the county officials. We went over our multi-year projection, a five-year projection, which by the way, they want a copy of, because they want to use it for other districts. And we went through our stress tests. The stress test that we went through is that we took out $48 million worth of revenue. We didn't take out the expenditures, we took out the revenue. So the revenues were like, what happens if we have 1% less COLA in our projections? What happens if the demographer is right for once and that we're going to have more kids leave us? That's the 851 number, that was the difference. And what happens if we don't have a COLA this year? This year, we've been able to increase our attendance to 94% compared to 93. So what happens if we go down one point? So all of those numbers equal $48 million. And when we looked at that and compared it to the board's criteria for our reserves, we met that criteria every year, through the fifth year. And that is not common, because when you look at a five-year projection, it tends to narrow down because of the compounding factor. But we found that our criteria met the stress test and that you would have your reserves as you've established. And if we were to go out to market to sell bonds, they would look at that reserve level and that would keep us, keep our credit rating at where it's at, which is the highest for school districts.
Right. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And Mar, I think trustee Erickson was next.
So you indicated though, that the, what we're approving tonight with our OUEA agreement is not included in this, correct?
Correct.
But when you talk about the stress test, are you, did you assume, are we still on, do we still have the same budgetary reserves or are we still in the safe zone, let's just say, with, when we approve that or if we approve that?
Correct.
Okay.
The conversation that we were having with the county is to review any potential tentative agreements. So we had, could input information live and showed them what our parameters were and what we were working with. So when I say that the stress test, that is including the negotiated agreement that we have on the agenda today.
Okay, yeah. So just to be clear, so people know in public that we have considered that and we're still, we're still good, even with the really good agreement I think that we have entered into. The pensions, I had a question about the pension stabilization. You said that we're overfunded by $32.9 million, and if we did what we did with the OPEB trust in 20, you said 2002?
2006.
Are you saying that we would basically use that overfunded $32.9 million? We would open up a new trust with that and then we would use whatever earnings we had to pay towards our pension costs? So towards that $16 million?
Correct.
Okay.
So the mechanics of that would be, when you look at these dollars, because you see, because of the state's increasing contribution rates, is that we're going to have to pay more even if our employees don't get a raise, just because the rates are going up. So rather than us use our general fund reserves, which is built into our multi-year projection, right? So that's part of the stress test. So if we, if we can generate a million dollars worth of investments, that we can then reimburse ourselves, so that way the general fund pays it, doesn't pay it, that means now you've reduced your operating costs and you're able to have more sustainable funding source for your essential programs. So you don't have to make cuts.
But obviously, we wouldn't be able to cover the whole thing. It would be some amount that we would be offsetting.
Correct. I wouldn't recommend that you would take all of the money.
Right.
But if you take, let's say, $10 million, well, $10 million of a $15 million increase is significant.
Uh huh.
Right? So I would recommend that you look at a multi-year approach, so that you would be taking, let's say, a percentage of the increase. So you would be covering that through an external, external funds rather than paying 100% out of the general fund.
I think that's all the questions I have for right now.
Thank you. Trustee Yamazaki.
Yeah, I just have one quick thing. Obviously, with the budget deficit, the governor's still committed to not cutting certain programs. You mentioned that the preschool TK is not going to be impacted, Prop 28 is not going to be impacted.
Correct.
Universal Mills, is that going to be impacted?
We don't know yet.
Well, that one is still on the table. And what about more transportation funding?
We don't know if the governor is going to go back and say, I can't afford the transportation plan, so I'm going to cut it in half or cut a fraction of that.
So right now, as we see it, it's the community schools is still intact?
Correct.
The TK, preschool, all that's intact? Prop 28 is intact?
Yes.
28, for art, arts funding? Yeah, okay. All right, that's, I just want to make sure that the public understood that, so those programs will continue.
For right now, yes.
Right. Thank you. Okay, and I want to thank your team too. I really appreciate all the hard work you're doing. Thank you so much.
Actually, I want to invite my team that was here. Please stand up and come up.
They're all like...
Yeah, she's talking to you. And Board President, I would like to recognize this team, because I think this presentation, I think, is different than a lot of other districts that are getting this same presentation right now, is, you know, this team has prepared, you know, to, you know, see Dave kind of drop the mic and walk away from, you know, this, you know, budget as strong as it looks, but if you notice, they also increased, you know, included some ideas, leaving breadcrumbs for us for the future in terms of additional revenues. So kind of a roadmap for the district to follow also in the future to take care of us. So it's, you know, not just taking care of us today, but looking to the future as well. So I'd like to thank the team, Mr. Rivera, for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
And this is my last presentation co-presenting with Dave, so.
Thank you.
I just want to express my appreciation for your generosity. Giving me a home for the last six years, your generous gift, which completely shocked me, I had no idea. I had no idea that my family was here. And so from now in the future, I may be from afar, but I'm always going to consider this my home and thank you so much for what you do. And actually giving me a home that I can come here, think outside the box, work with some great people, and make this the best district in the county. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rivera, for leaving behind your legacy to us. So now the public hearing, I will close the regular meeting and open up a public hearing at 9:37. Are there any speakers regarding the adoption of the 2023-24 estimated actuals and proposed 2024-25 proposed budget? Please line up. Go ahead, Jolynn.
I just wanted to say how happy I am that this is our budget and this is our budgetary position, because looking around at other school districts, they're in a very scary position. And it is nice to see, and I, sorry, I missed your celebration earlier, but thank you for everything you've done here. And I think you missed one funding opportunity. We should be licensing his budget plans to the other districts and earning a little more funding off of that. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Mrs. Lang. If there aren't any speakers, I will now close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting at 9:40. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to 7C. I believe that's you as well.
Busy night.
Yes, and I believe for this item, it's the same...
7C is a resolution for the reserves?
So there's no additional presentation? It was folded into the last presentation, so we would just need the board to take action.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Ottega, is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Glass. Any additional discussion? Go ahead, trustee Pelly.
I just had a question, Mr. Gonzalez. I had mentioned, just because the, the STIRS pension is on this, did you ask or check to see if there was any conflict of interest for me? I know we're not giving, unfortunately, not giving us more pension or increasing it, it's just a matter of the fact that it was on there, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, legal counsel went over a couple of different things for some trustees in regards to, you know, voting or having to abstain. And as long as it's not an individual, you know, contribution for you specifically and not others, if it's part of an entire class of people, then it's not required for you to abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 601. Thank you. All right, 7D, public hearing, Orange Unified Special Education Local Plan Area, annual service and budget plan approval. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I can take care of that, thank you. Tonight, as required by law, the district must conduct a public hearing for the 2024-25 Special Education Local Plan Area Annual Service Plan and Budget Plan. Our district plan supports programs and services for our students with disabilities. This item provides for the public hearing for the 24-25 SALPA Annual Budget and Service Plan.
Do we have a presentation or should we go into the public hearing?
You can go directly into the public hearing.
Okay. So I will now close the regular meeting and open the public hearing at 9:40. Are there any speakers wishing to address the board? And again, you don't need a blue card to be able to comment. Go ahead, Ms. Lang.
I just, special education is something that is so important, and I'm sure as a board, you often hear people when they're upset with the program or when things aren't going well. And that seems, parents get really angry with that because our kids are so important. And so I think it's important to make sure that you guys are funding proactively and making sure that special education is something that's really taken care of, because it matters a lot. A child who has enough special education support can succeed in the classroom and help everyone else in the classroom learn around them as well. Thank you.
Are there any additional speakers? If not, I will now close the public hearing and reopen the regular board meeting at 9:42. Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the 2024-25 SALPA Annual Budget and Service Plan. Is there a motion? Thank you, trustee Yamazaki, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Erickson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes 70. Thank you. We will now move on to 7D, tentative agreement between the Orange Unified School District and the Orange Unified Education Association and the recommendation for district leadership employees. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, Mr. Rajik from AALR will present on this item.
Yes, on the agenda this evening for ratification is the tentative agreement with the, between the Orange Unified School District and the Orange Unified Education Association, as well as ratification of equivalent compensation terms for your district leadership employees. The terms of the tentative agreement were negotiated consistent with governing board authorization and parameters. The costs of this tentative agreement have been shared with the county, and that covers the costs this year and the costs over the next two years. And the county has approved the terms of settlement. This tentative agreement concludes negotiations with the certificated unit for the 23-24 school year. And with that, it is recommended that the Board of Education ratify this tentative agreement along with ratification of equivalent compensation terms for district leadership employees.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Trustee Erickson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Yamazaki. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Ortega.
So that's why I was asking the questions earlier of Mr. Rivera on the stress test and seeing how, you know, the whole budget is playing itself out. And what is this one again? Is it nine?
The salary schedule was increased by 9.75%.
Correct. So that was always my concern is just the budget, you know, because I've shared it with them is, you know, it's a pretty healthy raise in these times. And so I just want to make sure that we're structurally going to be able to afford it because years past, we've done this, unfortunately, and we've had to make cuts in order to afford it. And that's unfortunate because then it affects the cuts to the classroom. And it affects the kids. Meanwhile, everyone else had their raises. So I just want to make sure that this, we're sound in doing this. So again, I'm not opposed to, you know, our employees getting pay raises or any of that at all. But I just want to make sure we're not going to affect, like we've done in the past, where we've had to make cuts to the classroom. And it's affected the kids tremendously. So I just want to be cautious in that one right there.
I'd like to make a comment, please. So just listening to what you said, I just want to make it clear that our employees are one of the lowest paid in our district. And so this 9.75% increase will just bring them up to above the median. And I think that our teachers deserve it because they've worked so hard. Last year, they didn't get a big raise while other districts were giving big raises. And I commend them for just going through this. And I'm really pleased that we're able to offer this, and they deserve it.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, we already did verify that you went through the stress test specifically with this agreement in mind, and we passed the stress test, correct?
In fact, we did the stress test and we were approved by the county, as Mr. Rajic said. But I think you also heard from Mr. Rivera that there were additional stress tests in addition to that and including out years further beyond what is required for the AB 1200, right?
Yes, the county requires the costs this year and the next two years. But we sort of have a history internally of doing a five-year projection.
Right. And in the past, maybe we weren't using as conservative of assumptions. And now we are, and we're good, right?
We're good.
Okay. Okay. You have a question?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstain.
Okay. So motion passes 601 with one abstention.
Is there a reason why there's an abstention? Do you have to give a reason? Can we ask for a reason for an abstention?
I think so. An abstention is just for specific issues, right?
Right, so I'm just wondering what the rationale is behind an abstention.
Because that's my vote.
That's not a vote. An abstention is not a vote.
Well, why don't you vote no if you don't agree with it? Like you were here or you've been part of the process. So I'm just curious as to what the rationale is. You do not want to make a commitment?
Do I not want to make a commitment? This isn't about me. You guys have already voted, so continue.
Well, no, we have policies on what an abstention is. And obviously, it's for specific issues. You can vote no, Mr. Ortega. It's not that hard.
Okay. Thank you all.
Is it going to stand?
He's staying as an abstention without comment. 8A, Asset Management Plan Discussion. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, we're going to bring up Mr. Rivera one more time. So he can help us with another idea.
It's a slow night, only three presentations. So I have Mr. Yeoman here to assist me with this presentation. And it's to give you an update of our asset management plan, something that we have been discussing several times over the last few months. So we broke it down into different categories for you. So I'm not going to read that for you. You can, we can answer your questions as we cover the sections. So this is an aerial shot of the district office right here on Handy Street. What you cannot see, but I can allude to, and as you drive up, you see these handsome air conditioning units on our rooftops that were probably here when dinosaurs roamed. So what we want to talk about is the fact, and the way I can describe the district office is like having a two-bedroom house on an acre lot. Is it being fully utilized? And the answer is no. We already have shared with the board that we have limited space here. Trying to schedule a meeting is not the easiest task because we have lack of office space, lack of meeting space. Very challenging to meet the needs of our constituents in our schools. You can see that in terms of the buildings, that most of our roofing systems are 25 years old. So there's just going to be a matter of time that we have to start spending money on these roofing systems. So we estimate that cost at $2.5 million. We use the information that we gathered for our school sites on a per-square-foot basis to give you that estimate. You can see over 75% of our HVAC units are more than 25 years of age. We haven't spent money at the district office in years. The driveways and the parking lots need to be improved. So you're looking at spending several millions or several hundreds of thousands of dollars. So if we were to, plus, because we lack space, we have people assigned to school sites that ordinarily would be at a district office. An example of that is our purchasing department. I've checked with that services, and we have staff members. Wherever there's space, that's where we have people working. And then district staff is having to go out to the school sites to supervise that staff. Also, the property here is very valuable and would be in high demand by any developer. We have a waiting list of developers who have called us to say, "If you have surplus land, we want to be interested." That list is up to 186. So I don't have a lot of concerns that if we were to put a for-sale sign, that we would get a lot of interest for this property. So the district has had a history of disposing of property. And I went through and listed the first three here for your edification. But some of this happened a while ago, and some of the board members weren't on the board during these transactions. So you have Riverdale, Silverado Canyon, and then Kilifer. Kilifer is the most recent. The Walnut transactionally was closed, fell out of escrow because the developer, which bidded on the property, wanted to negotiate with the district a lower price. And that did not happen, which then created the escrow to be terminated and no transaction to be followed through on. There's waivers that have been processed, mostly for the bidding of leased property. And that happened in 2020. And it took nine months for the state to approve that waiver. And that happened to be for the Peralta site. So I'm going to have Mr. Yeoman go through the different elements of surplusing land and some of the legal requirements.
Thank you very much. In dealing with surplus property, there's two basic avenues that you can go through. One is, as I call, kind of traditional surplusing, where it's more of a competitive award to the highest bidder in the end result. But you go through, typically, the district will have a 7-Eleven Committee, District Advisory Committee, which to kind of review different properties. It can be entire property. It can be portions of property. And we've kind of been talking about that over the last few months of maybe there's some unused or underutilized portions of some of the school sites that might qualify as being surplus, i.e., not needed for school classroom purposes. And so the committees look at that. They bring back a recommendation. They don't make the decision. A recommendation to the board. The board considers that recommendation. And then if they concur with it, then they can move forward to offer the properties to the different public entities because there's priority entities that are entitled to notice. Then if that doesn't go anywhere, which frequently it doesn't because most of the public entities that get these notices, they don't have the funds to acquire property anyway. So it's a procedure that you go through. And then the boards determine, okay, now that's considered to purchase or lease. So they have to pass a resolution by a two-thirds vote of the board in order to put it out for sale or lease. And whether it's a sale or lease, under statute, when you, under this traditional method, they have to set forth the essential terms under which they are going to sell or lease a property, including what is the price going to be? The minimum purchase price or the lease rate? So it's a very narrow scope. So when you solicit bids, if anyone deviates from what that resolution of intent and what the elements of that were, the board is under the requirement to reject that bid, even if they like everything else about it. So it's, really ties your hands in large part. An alternative method is to seek a waiver. And as Mr. Rivera said, the district has done that. It's a very common vehicle that's used. And what it does, it gives the board flexibility if it's to look at more than just the price. But in order to do it, you have to, the board has to submit a waiver request to the State Board of Education. And it has to be reviewed by the community. You have a public hearing. You have to have input by the unions of the district. Do they support it? Do they not support it? And then it goes, and it could be either for sale or lease. And the district has done that, like for the Peralta property back in 2020 and 21. And then it expired, I think, in March of '23, the waiver that was there. So if there was any, just using the Peralta property as an example, the board would have to then put it out again and seek another waiver because it's expired. But if it's then it's approved by the State Board of Education, then the board would adopt a resolution and issue requests for proposals. And so you can look at more than just the price. You could look, okay, what are they planning on using the property for? And since there's a big push for residential, residential obviously brings kids into the schools. And so there's, that's usually very much where the districts want to go. So you can put what the parameters are under that request for proposals. And you can basically negotiate the terms with whoever you want to. So you can narrow it down to the top three. And so you can narrow it down. So you can really get the best candidate that meets the needs of hopefully, who wants to purchase your property, as well as the needs of the school district, too. So it's used frequently. The State Board of Education in recent years is much more receptive of granting those waivers. They don't necessarily make you go through and have an unsuccessful transaction before you can take it. At one point, that, they were more that way. But I think that they, there's just such wisdom in allowing the flexibility for the districts, knowing that there's a lot of parameters, lots of different aspects in a property that are not solved by just looking at the price, that they're very receptive of doing that. And as Mr. Rivera said, the downside is that it takes a while. The State Board of Education, in my experience, is anywhere from, you know, six months, nine months before they actually have a decision. And sometimes that doesn't work too well. If you have a piece of property and that, say, you have someone who's really interested in it, then sometimes, I've had this districts, too, where we've considered the waiver process. It's a really, you have a buyer that you're really interested in, that's really interested in the property and is willing to pay pretty much whatever. And so the district goes through the regular, traditional bidding process, sets a minimum purchase price. We had this at another school district in Orange County. And they put like $19 million. This is a piece of property that was, had in a school that had not been used for years and years, was surplus. And put it out for bid. They had like five or six different bids. The top bid was $31 million. And so it was just amazing. But you were able to accomplish what the district needed and then so much more in a much more expeditious manner by being able to use that process. So it really depends on the property, depends on the timing of what methodology makes more sense for the property. So that's kind of on the surplusing part. On the counterpart is more the acquisition of the property. Acquisitions of property, probably the most important thing is you're doing your due diligence. You have to go through, are the, what title exceptions are on the property? There's an easement that goes right down the middle of the property where it's been there. And that, say, it's for sewer line that you can't build anything over it. Well, that doesn't really help the district unless you can get it removed. And so you look at the title exceptions. You look at the environmental assessment. You always do that. And much of the time, you'll do a letter of intent. And there's one, just the first couple pages that's included in your packet. And sometimes that is very helpful because it's not a binding contract. But it sets forth kind of the central terms that the district is looking for in a piece of property. And then if you come into an agreement with that, those are kind of setting the parameters for a purchase and sale agreement, which then would be binding on the parties once it's executed. So a lot of times, you can kind of test the water and see, okay, are we close? And if we're close, then we'll go to the purchase and sale agreement. If you can't come to terms on the letter of intent, which is not binding, then there's no sense of going forward to the next step. So that's used frequently. And in conjunction with the acquisition of property, you can obviously pay cash for something. The district has all sorts of resources. You could have certificates of participation, kind of a type of loan, to help pay for all or a portion of it. And frequently, you can use kind of an exchange, which probably has the least amount of statutory requirements as any other approach that's in the education code. Because it requires you to do a two-thirds vote of the board again, a letter of intent to exchange. And you kind of put what the central terms are, excluding the price. And that's about all. You have the Surplus Land Act that's more recent, and you have to declare property as surplus or exempt surplus land. Almost anything that's gone through the 7-11 Committee is exempt surplus land. The exchange property is exempt surplus land. And so it really simplifies matters, because I mean, you have to give notice to the Department of Housing and Community Development, and they have 30 days to kind of generally, you're going to provide them the resolution. The resolution that the board adopts is going to set forth, this has been through the 7-11 Committee, and so you cite chapter and verse, and therefore, it should be exempt surplus property. So the department takes a look at it within 30 days, they give you back the report confirming that, and then you can go whichever direction you would like on that, as far as negotiating the terms or setting the system in place in order to accept bids on the acquisition. So that can be done very easily. Some of these asset management features that Mr. Rivera's been talking about, you can have kind of a combination, where you're looking at, you have another party who's interested in your piece of property, the district is interested in another piece of property, where that third party might be willing to purchase the property that the district wants, and simultaneously with the close of that, exchange that property for the district's property that they want. So you can have that kind of combination, and it can be very successful. And when you have an exchange process that's so flexible and doesn't have a lot of the same constraints, and something that can be very beneficial and allow all the parties to reach a successful conclusion. So that's kind of an overview of a lot of things that I could give, you know, a two-hour presentation on just any given one of those, because there's a lot of nuance, lots of examples I could probably provide. So.
So we're always looking ahead of how we can reduce our operating costs without impacting the classroom. So I always look at, is there any excess land, underutilized land? Because we're paying about 40, between $50,000 and $60,000 per acre to maintain that piece of land, to pay the staff to mow that land, and for the equipment that's needed. So it easily compounds, when we have four or five acres that are not being utilized, we're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars a year that we could avoid that expense, if it's not being, if it's not, if it's not serving an instructional purpose. So we need to look at those opportunities. So here's two examples. When I went to La Vida, what is not depicted here, the property is very wide, and there's pylons that are on the grass area, where the kids do not go past, simply because the size of the property is so large. You have the same effect at Taft. So if you look at the CDE guidelines, if you're going to build a school for 500 kids, you're going to need between nine to 10 acres. So for these two schools, we should be between 18 to 20 acres. For these two schools, we have 37 acres. So we have enough property for a few hundred more kids at each site. So that's an example, we're looking at the green space, the excess space, we're not looking at sight of closing any schools. So we currently have two properties. So this is the, primarily the driving range area at Peralta. The other areas are committed right now under contract. And this is the Walnut property, which is adjacent to Santiago Charter School. So we own entire, that entire property. There's a palm tree farm that's down below, which we own, and a parking lot that is used occasionally by the, by the estate for weddings. So what we're seeking today is to collaborate with the board and get some input on the next steps, and what makes sense with any disposition of property and/or acquisition of properties. So we've already talked to you about process and strategies, so I think some of that is just an evolution. But really, we need to hear from the board if there's any feedback that you have regarding those opportunities. And then we would need to, if we're going to be talking about properties, we have to go through due process, so it's not like a transaction is going to happen overnight. It takes a while for that to occur, because we have to have soil testing, we have to have these structure inspected to make sure that it's safe. And then there's the, a series of transactions, environmental site assessment, appraisal, title reports, engaging with civil engineers to assess, you know, the property. So we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about this process, or if you seek more information, we're happy to answer your questions at this point.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rivera. That was a lot of legal terms and technicalities, and so I kind of want to turn the story a little bit to share some of the background of why we've asked for this presentation, if it's okay. As we heard tonight from the LCAP and through focus groups and just feedback from our communities that we really need to improve our facilities. So when we asked you, what would it take to improve our facilities, the very basic need for roofs and HVACs and all of the drains and things that our schools absolutely need right now, comes out to $110 million.
Correct.
And instead of just pulling that money from our general fund, you got creative on how we can potentially attain some of that money. In addition to that, every time I volunteer at my children's school, or we do school site visits, there's lack of parking, and there's always parking issues, whether it's through like drop-off and pickup, or just other parents wanting to come volunteer. And one of the questions that we have asked of like, why is there limited parking in a lot of our school sites, is because we are housing a lot of district staff at remote sites. So for example, instead of having teams together here at the district office, they're all in silos in, at other sites, because we just don't have the space here, which also limits how much those teams really are able to get together and collaborate. Like you said, we don't have meeting space. The other thing that we heard tonight as well, a part of your plan was to be able to expand the CARES program. So in order to expand the CARES program, we need classroom space, and we don't really want to double up on an existing classroom, because we would want to give that space, give the teachers the autonomy to have their own space and not double up. And so in order to also be able to open up additional classrooms for CARES, we would need to move some of our additional resources back at a district office, which is why you brought up potentially having a commercial site where we would have everyone housed under one roof. So I hope that clarified a lot of the questions of why is the board asking for an asset management plan and all of these different legal terms? Those were the initial questions that we've been asking for a long time. So is there anything else that you want to add as to how having a larger district office would benefit our schools, or did that pretty much sum it up?
No, I think you pretty well summarized it, but to add to the district office discussion, once I can get there. I didn't have enough cake tonight, that's why. So the problem that we have, which is true with many districts, is that we have sites that were built in the 50s and 60s. When kids walked to school, the demand in the parking was not as great. The size of the vehicles weren't as large as they are now. Kids went home for lunch, so you didn't have as many, you know, lunch facilities. Psychologists, counselors, nurses weren't in the plan, so the facilities weren't built conducive to have service providers be housed in an office space. So we're constrained with that in how we run our schools, because then we just have to find space. So the good thing that, in my mind, would happen with COVID, is that the state recognized that we have needs, and they've been funding those needs. Now that we are looking at our sites, we don't have the facilities we need to have the essential employees there. You know, it's very limiting, you can't have conversations with parents, and there's a lack of space. So by having a central office, you can take people off the site to provide more flexibility to the schools. You can have additional meeting space, parent space, because right now, we don't have the ability to serve our parents over the summer, because then when they enroll their students, it's at the school site. In many districts, they have a central office, they have a parent resource center, where you can enroll kids, have your kids tested, it's a one-stop shop that you can pick up all the information you need about enrolling your child. And by doing that, you can convert this property and use those assets to improve schools. So, you know, one can't happen without the other. So I see that as a win-win situation, that the district office building, if you were to add another 20, 30, 40,000 square feet, and basically double the size of this property, you would have essential services, parent services for students and parents, and the community, and you would actually lower your operating cost, because the cost of maintaining these air conditioning units that are 25 years old is very high. So if you go to a more efficient operation, not only are you going to save money and provide services, but now you're not going to be spending money with the utility bill, you're going to spend money in the classroom.
Thank you. Are there additional comments or questions?
Well, yeah, I just kind of wanted to add to that, and because I got this question, somebody emailed me and said, how dare you think about improving the district offices when our elementary schools need improving? And I said, that isn't the point. The point isn't to improve the DO over the elementary schools, the point is to generate revenue, and to generate revenue that we can use towards this amount of work that we have to do on basic safety things and comfort for our students. And so you can't take a school and move it to a commercial building. But you can take the DO, which sits on a really old but valuable piece of property, and you can move that to a commercial building, and we can take advantage of historically low commercial rates.
Correct.
So it's really the only, this would be the only option for doing that, but it provides the additional benefit potentially of being able to then create really a full village for the DO and services. So we'd be paying less money for the commercial building, we vacate a very valuable property that would generate revenue, and we have the added benefit of having an organized and more organized and centralized district office. So it really, I mean, it's being done for the purpose of loosening up cash basically, so that we can then put that money into our elementary schools. And it kind of makes sense, given the, like I said, the historically low commercial rates that you talked about at the last meeting or two meetings ago. So I just want to be clear that people understand that that is the end game. The end game is to invest money into our elementary schools.
So next time I'm asked that question, I'm going to give that answer.
Okay. Yeah. Really? Usually, okay. Okay, sorry about that. I did, okay, so in terms of the waiver that we have here, you said that we can get a waiver for either all or a portion of a property, right? It doesn't have to be for the whole property.
Well, typically, you just put it for the whole property. All it does is just gives you that opportunity to do something. So let's say you have a certain portion of the property that's already committed under contract, but then it falls out, or something changes. If you have the waiver on the entire property, you can still just exercise your rights and have an RFP on just a portion of that property, just the underutilized.
Okay.
And so you don't have to just identify and define exactly, we only want this two acres here.
Mm-hmm.
You might as well put the whole site in and see where it goes.
Well, I think about like the Peralta property.
Yeah.
And it was committed for 25 years. So we have a huge portion of that property that we can't do anything with potentially for 25 years.
Yeah.
Because we tied it up. We didn't have a waiver for that, because you said it expired, right?
Correct.
So we negotiated, or we entered into a contract, a 25-year contract that ties it up, it didn't have a waiver, so I don't know what the legality is of that, but I question it. But we could take a different portion of Peralta, get a waiver for that, and then enter into negotiations with a different, potentially a different organization.
Yeah, certainly.
And as far as, okay, so we look at like La Vida or Taft, and you look at a portion of that field. So essentially, what we're saying is, is the property itself is too big to serve the number of students that we have there, and they're not utilizing that field space, right? So would we actually then, we would have to surplus a portion of that property, that field space, or?
Yeah, so I think a couple things would happen. So if I just draw a line across the property, so let's just say it's here, for discussion purposes. So there would be a number of acres that would be down below, and let's just say it's five acres, right, from here across. So let's just say that's five acres. We would surplus that, we would go the process of disposing of that property. We would also look at, and we've already walked the site, Mrs. Vasquez was with me, we would walk the site to look at all the blacktop space, because at one time, this housed like dozens of portables when the site was 900 kids. So we would want to look at some configurations and look at the blacktop, because maybe the size of the blacktop is not needed, so we could actually create and look at some variations, maybe some grass, look at what would be, you know, more conducive to the learning. So we wouldn't just look at the grass area, we'd, we'd look at how we can make that site better and attractive, as well as address the needs. So we would not just look at the grass, but we would look at how we could improve the school.
Okay. And how, I mean, we can determine what, where the money goes that we generate from those sites.
So this.
In other words, if we want to, like you said, use that money, whatever we generate, and we'll sink it right back into, let's say, Taft or La Vida, we completely control that. We don't have to, I mean, we have to use it for capital outlay, but we don't have to use it, we're not bound by how we use that, as long as it's capital outlay, right?
It's a board's discretion.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So in the past, the district sold those three properties? Like, how were those funds used afterwards?
That's a good question. When I was preparing for today and looking at the prices of the past, it was shocking how prices have changed. So Silverado Canyon, which is 11 acres, we sold it for $2.1 million. That's shocking, because prices in Orange County right now, it's between $2 to $3 million or $4 million per acre. So those funds were deposited, by law, it has to be deposited in Fund 40. So unless there's a waiver filed with the state to exclude the use of those funds on facility, they were used on facilities. So they were used to improve facilities, paint carpet, a variety of expenditures. So in the last, since 1617, we have spent $133 million in our facilities outside of Measure S. So a portion, a small portion of that money was coming from these property transactions.
Okay, so adding to what trustee Erickson was asking, essentially, the board can come up with a resolution on whichever one of these plans or all the plans that we've dis-
Certainly, so we can create a resolution. You can assign proceeds from any of these transactions to be used for stated purposes. And then the board would take action on those resolutions, and we have to earmark them in our reserves. So they only could be used for those purposes unless the board acts at a later time to change that for whatever reason.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions?
Well, I just want to say, I would hope that this board would be committed to following the facilities master plan that we created because unfortunately, in the last few years, we're spending tens of millions of dollars on things that were not part of the facilities master plan. So I would hope that whatever resolution we have is consistent with furthering the mission, which is to improve those elementary schools.
Exactly. And I had asked Mr. Rivera previously about the Taft property. And to clarify, it's just field space. We're not changing the campus. But a part of the facilities master plan with Taft specifically is that it would turn into a world religion, world language, sorry, school, a school site and potentially merge some of our dual immersion programs into that one site. So even with the reduction of the field space, we would still have enough campus space for a big program like that.
Correct.
Fessy Yamazaki?
Yeah, I really like the idea of centralizing our office, district office. You've mentioned so many reasons why it could, should be done, especially providing more resources for our schools and also even having a parent space. And I remember during the facilities master plan, it was mentioned that, you know, perhaps Peralta could be used for a district office, and I know the cost is really cost prohibitive. It was around $800 to $1,000 a square foot right now, and its costs are escalating. So, but purchasing an existing property, the costs are low, like at historic lows, like Trustee Erickson mentioned, and it would be closer to 200 and something a square foot?
Yes, so the, so the cost, right now, the commercial market, what I'm seeing is out there, is ranging between as low as $160 a square foot.
Wow.
Between $200 and $250 a square foot. If we were to go and look at portables, so the portables, for example, that we put down at Fletcher, that's about $250 a square foot.
Mm-hmm.
So the cost of construction, even in portables, is high. If we were to build a brick and mortar building, you're looking at between $800 to $1,000 a square foot. So in other words, not only would it take longer because of the cost of going to DSA and then going to construction, but a commercial building is either one-third or one-fourth of the cost of building something in our schools.
So we're kind of at a weird juxtaposition where cost of commercial is an all-time low, but cost of residential is at an all-time high, correct?
Exactly.
And so this property and other properties are very valuable to developers.
Yes, so we have a waiting list, I think I said earlier, of 186 developers.
Mm-hmm.
So we can go through the process and send them notices to say, "Are you still interested? There's other people who are going to watch this presentation," and then put their names in. So I'm sure that even if half the list, you know, if we reduce by half, we're still going to be over 100 potential buyers, investors. So when you have that many people interested in our property, then you're going to be able to ascertain a higher price.
And I think you had mentioned that the facilities here at the DO is like declining, and there's a lot of costs involved to even maintaining it, the HVAC.
If you walk by my office, you see stucco peeling, you see things that need to be repaired. That is not in the estimate that I've given you.
Yeah.
I just talked about the air conditioning, the roofing, and the parking area. So yes, there's a significant improvements that need to occur here that have not been budgeted or planned for because we focus on spending our money at our school sites. So by not having to do that, your cost, there's cost avoidance. So you're not spending money here, and you're able to take that money and spend it at a school site.
Okay. So I just want to make it clear, this office here was a school. It was built for students and classrooms. It was not really meant to be an office. And we made the best of it by partitioning off a lot of the rooms. And I just can give you an example. I was in the personnel department talking to somebody about some health insurance stuff, and there was no privacy whatsoever. The walls were so thin, if somebody had to go in and talk about a personnel issue or personnel issue, everybody in the room might be able to hear it. And I think somebody said that they kind of put up some foam stuff to try to absorb some of the sounds, but this is not a professional environment when that happens, and so that concerns me, too.
Yeah, the waiting area for candidates is basically a three-by-four area.
It's a hallway. Yeah, it's not, I walked in there and it's just not, it's just not really conducive to good.
Yeah, some of the offices there are converted closets.
Yes, yes. I think superintendent's office was a closet.
My former office was a closet, and my current office is the kindergarten room.
Yes, yeah. Although you have a nicer view of the orange tree out there. So I just want to make that a point because right now, we're throwing good money after bad money. Is that what it is? Yeah. And so it might be time for us to consider because the time is right. We have to take advantage of the economic conditions of what's happening with the cost of the commercial buildings being at an all-time low. I mean, $160 to $250 a square foot is like-
It's ridiculous compared to what we have to pay when we construct on a school site.
So have you researched sites at all, or are there sites that are up for consideration? I'm not saying specifically, but how is the availability look out there?
So to answer that question, every week I check to see what's out there because I want to be familiar with it. It varies. Sometimes there's one or two properties, sometimes there's no properties.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not like there's hundreds of properties out there. It's a very limited market. But what's happening is that the mortgages for these commercial properties are coming due. So many, so many of the people that purchased these commercial properties before the pandemic, they were getting interest rates that were between 3.5% to 4%. Now these mortgages are coming due because they have a three-year, five-year adjustable.
Or the balloon.
And now they're coming up at 7%. So, and plus, they have a vacancy factor close to 20%.
What is contributing to the vacancy factor?
I'm sorry?
What's contributing to the vacancy factor?
COVID created this mindset that I don't need to work from work, I can work from home. So for businesses, like my neighbor across the street, he's working in Newport Beach, he has to go into the office twice a week. He's a computer programmer. So people have learned how to work from home, virtual, you know, meetings and virtually. So that market has created a crisis for the commercial market because there's not a demand to be in an office as much as it was. In fact, there's incentives that employers are providing because of lack of parking, of having people work from home and only come into the office when it's essential. So there's a, there's a couple of factors that are occurring there. So with the vacancy factors, which is what the mortgages were drawn in, the revenues against, that they were going to have a certain level of rental revenue, and now that rental revenue isn't there. So we're seeing some of the properties that are being sold is either that the mortgage, mortgages have increased significantly, and the owners can't keep up with paying the mortgage, and they have depleting revenues because of the vacancies.
Yeah, I didn't, I know, like, cities like San Francisco are really widely impacted by that. My understanding is Google is going to be vacating some buildings, and I didn't realize that it was happening in Orange County to that extent. So hearing that, I just feel like it might be-
We were seeing people from the San Francisco area to relocate to the beach area here in Orange County.
Uh-huh.
Because they don't need to pay the rates of San Francisco. Now you have vacancy factors of the 25%, 30% in San Francisco.
Mm-hmm.
And those people that were working in the financial markets, and now they're just located throughout the state because they can work basically anywhere.
Remotely, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So I know you're seeking board direction tonight.
Yes.
But one thing that is really important to me is having the community be well-informed about the real estate decisions that we're making. So how do you think we can accomplish that?
Well, we can accomplish it in several ways. Having tonight's conversation is helpful. We have a communications department where we can put videos out, presentations, and make that available to the community. We have 30,000 hits that we get when the superintendent sends out the newsletter to the community. We have the cities wanting to piggyback with us to send their messages because they're not getting that type of responses in their community. I don't see town halls being as popular as they have because people want to see something virtually, they want to have access to it, if they have questions, they can ask. But certainly, that could be something that we could do. And we can do that all in tandem. It's not like we're standing still and going, moving one step at a time. We can do that in tandem with looking at properties, looking at opportunities. Because the problem with properties is that they're there one day and they're gone the next. What benefit that we have is our fiscal position, our liquidity. We don't have to go to a bank and get financing. We have property that we can look at and exchange, just like this property, because once we vacate it, we don't have a need for it. So we have opportunities that others don't have. We have liquidity that others don't have, and we have a credit rating that others don't have. So that allows us to be, take a strong position and, you know, move forward. So in communicating to the community, we can do the PowerPoints, we can have meetings, we can do things virtually, we can do the things that we're doing now and put it on a portion of our website so that way people can access it. We can do it in dual languages. So, and we can do that all at the same time while we're looking at properties and having discussions.
Sounds good to me. Thank you. Any additional comments? If not, we'll ask for a board consensus to move forward. I see nods and no more comments. Okay. Please continue with further research and everything that we've discussed today to move forward in this plan. Thank you. Thank you so much for all the hard work.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, it is after 10 o'clock, and I asked the board if we have additional time. I'm assuming we're going to go till 11:00. Is everyone okay with that?
We have four public comments. I don't know how many are here.
For consent?
No, on 17, but just to accommodate that time.
Okay. So just in case, 11:30, but I don't think we'll go that late.
Mm-mm.
Okay, we will move forward with consent. So consent items are acted upon by one motion. However, any such item can be considered separately at a board member's request and will be acted upon following approval of the consent items. Would anyone like to pull an item? Okay. Would anyone like to motion to approve all consent items? Thank you, Trustee Pelley. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Glass? Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item 17, non-agenda public comment. Trustee Erickson.
Yes. So persons wishing to speak should submit a public comment card prior to the meeting. In general, individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public input to 30 minutes. We only have four cards, so that is not an issue, and nothing else is an issue here. So I will call the first speaker, which is Scott Resnick.
Good evening, President Page, Superintendent Gonzalez, trustees. Congratulations, by the way, for the six of you approving a well-deserved compensation package to the teachers. It's greatly appreciated for my family and my kids. My name's Scott Resnick. My name's Scott Resnick. I'm the proud parent of a soon-to-be first grader at Jordan Academy. I also have two future Jaguars at home, so anything and everything that happens at Jordan is important to me and my family. While I was saddened to learn that Jordan's principal left, I, like many other Jordan parents, realized this was our opportunity to shape the future of such a dynamic school with several incredibly special programs. Orange unified as many great elementary schools, and each one has its own unique character and identity. Selecting a principal for an opening shouldn't be a centralized role taking place here at the district office. Elementary schools don't deserve to be treated as the minor leagues for an administrative career. These schools, every single one, deserves a perfect candidate, and each community deserves the opportunity to have the final say in who's selected. We should thrive to make sure each one of our elementary schools is a career destination for a perfect principal. Jordan isn't just a school with a dual immersion Spanish-English program or a special education program. Jordan's a community school. A community school is defined as a school where the entire community, teachers, students, parents, alumni, work together to strengthen conditions for student learning and healthy development. The importance of Jordan as a community school is far-reaching, and next week, we're meeting as a community to understand the principal opening and move forward with selecting a new principal. For anyone watching this meeting or wanting to attend, please join parents and neighbors on June 20th at 11:00 a.m. at Jordan. Jordan's next principal needs to have experience, a deep understanding of what it takes to run a strong dual immersion program, a familiarity with, and an appreciation for the Almedina community and community schools in general. Jordan's next principal needs to be selected by the Jordan community. The Jordan community deserves a principal who wants to serve as much as we want that principal to serve. And if that principal can't be found immediately, Jordan and OUSD shouldn't settle. An interim principal with solid support from OUSD and the community should be placed to make sure our amazing programs and dynamic community can thrive. As a Jordan parent, I'm asking you to give as much deference as you possibly can to the community in selecting Jordan's next principal.
Next up is Mia Ri. Mia? Kim Vanderhook? She gone? She gone, okay. Julie Lopacholo?
Lopiccolo.
Lopiccolo, sorry.
I was going to help you with that.
Thank you. I need help.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, President Page, and trustees of the board, and thank you for your time. My name is Julie Lopiccolo, and I'm a parent of two children currently attending Jordan Academy of Language and Computer Science. I, like many parents who did not grow up in this city, was very surprised and overwhelmed to learn that I had to choose my, or I could choose my children's school, and that the many children in my neighborhood would not be attending our local schools, but would be strewn all across the district in many private and public schools. This was an overwhelming decision for our family and one that we took very seriously. When we learned that we had a dual immersion program in our, in our district, and upon researching the excellent principal at Jordan, the choice for us was very easy, and the opportunity to achieve a certificate of biliteracy and for our children to be more prepared global citizens of the world had a measurable value for us and we believe is one of the most exciting things that our district offers. That being said, while this remains extremely important for our family, our experience thus far at Jordan, I have a student entering third grade and one entering first, is the community. The dedication of our incredible teachers and the high involvement of Jordan parents is really what sets this school apart. Both the teachers and parents- Both the teachers and parents give countless hours to ensure that our children not only receive an excellent education, but that each of them feel secure and happy when they walk through the gates every day. I can remember distinctly how I felt to learn that we are losing our principal only one year after we had carefully selected this school, and again, this year, as soon as the final day was out. It was unnerving to feel this hole in our, our children's lives, where they spend so many hours outside of our care and where they are developing into the people they will become. And it's even more unnerving to think that the choice of this person who's going to fill this important role may not be specially selected for our community with the knowledge, experience, and desire to lead this important program in our district and be the heart of our special school. My ask of you today is the following: Consider the specific needs of a bilingual program when hiring our new principal. It's essential that the role be filled by someone with experience in bilingual education. And ask for the input of our community. Our parents and our Jordan teachers are with our children every day and not only know this community, but are this community, and they deserve to have a say in who leads our school, who will help shape our children. Our Jordan community will come together to help guide this decision if involved and allowed to be involved, and we, and we will help ensure that the candidate selected to serve as our future principal will ensure the long-term success of this school, our district, and most importantly, the lives of our children. Thank you.
There are no more speakers.
Thank you. 18, board or staff comments? None. Meeting is adjourned at 10:45.